Bienvenidos, welcome. Sorry, that was really close. I call to order the retreat of the Beaverton School Board on January 28th at 2:02 PM. I want to note that we have six, five school board members are present. Ugana is excused for today. Sunita is here, stuck in traffic down the street, but will be here soon. And all other board members are present in person. We have four topics for our retreat today. Literacy instruction, so we'll be finishing up that conversation that we started last time at our last meeting. Work session, our board development strategic plan, metrics dashboard, and equity and inclusion conversation today. And we'll go ahead and get started with our literacy instruction with Deputy Superintendent Heather Cordy and team. And I'll have, actually hand it over to Dr. Baldetis to get us started before.
So thank you. I know we're in a timeline here. We have about 40 minutes. The team has another engagement to get to, so we'll get to it quick. So turn it over to Dr. Cordy and team.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dr. Baldetis, Board Chair Perez, members of the board. Again, it is our pleasure to get to visit with you about the really amazing work that our team is leading and our staff is engaging in around literacy. So as a reminder, we were with you at the last board meeting and the work session prior. And all of our team, except for one, is able to be here today. Our, one of our teachers on special assignment, Chrissy Lawrence, had a pre-arranged medical appointment. And she regrets not being able to be here, and we will miss her, but the team is ready to go regardless. So we will, we're not going to go through, take the time to go through introductions again. And we will, just as a reminder, we were about to wrap up the focus on the elementary programming and work done. And we will be transitioning into conversation about co-teaching this afternoon, the Early Literacy Success Grant, and then transitioning into a focus on sharing with you what is happening at the secondary level, grades six through 12, and answering the questions that you have. So with that, I will hand things over to one of our K-8 execs and the exec that oversees language arts, Robin Kabrowski.
Good afternoon. Thanks so much for having us here. So we're, I'm going to actually directly turn it over to Toshica Marizio, who's going to share with you where we left off, which was we had just finished watching a really beautiful video of children in the midst of a structured literacy lesson in the classroom from Raleigh Hills. And so we're going to move from there into a conversation around co-teaching and the literacy block.
Yeah, hi. Good afternoon. I wanted to just share, as mentioned, about the structured literacy awesome video that we saw from Raleigh Hills. In that video, if you remember, the teacher was teaching about digraphs, the vowel combinations or the consonant vowel combinations of cha, wa, letters and sounds, blend phonemes, and then the students were sounding out words or heart words is what they called it, there and where. And so if you just picture that lesson that you observed, and then also picture our newcomer students or multilingual students in that structured literacy lesson, and you'll see that in that lesson, keeping them in the classroom is really valuable so that they could benefit from a structured literacy lesson, just like you saw. And so this slide here talks about our program model, our for multilingual learners at the elementary level is an integrated model, co-teaching. And it really lends itself to supporting the literacy instruction for our multilingual learners. And one of the things that we learned, we talked a lot about the research on science of reading and the brain research is that, and what we learned is that students don't have to wait to learn to read until they've learned language, and that they could do this concurrently while they are acquiring another language. I know Dr. Berla has always talked about that. And so that the instructional model that we selected really serves that purpose, is to keep the literacy and the language together in the classroom. And so when we were adopting or selecting the curriculum, we made sure that elementary teachers receive training on scaffolding for multilingual learners. So we can go on to the next slide. The other thing that HMH did for us is that we, it provides, it comes with extensive scaffolds.
Can you clarify just with HMH, just, I know most people know what it means, but just in case. Huetlin.
Huetlin, Mifflit, Harkort, I think is what it stands for. That's the curriculum that we, that we selected at the elementary level. So when we look at that curriculum, we were really, really excited that it comes with a lot of supports for our multilingual learners. So for example, teacher's guides have the support built in for our multilingual learners. The materials that scaffold the learning at the tier one level for multilingual learners, such as the English Language Development Tabletop Mini Lessons and the Tabletop Mini Lessons for Reading. Materials that provide focused support for newcomer students, such as, like I mentioned, the structured literacy, the foundational literacy, as well as English 3D resources. It comes with a separate component to support multilingual learners. The MyBook also has a lot of graphic organizers that help to build student schema for deep meeting making of content through the use of that graphic organizer. And then we've provided ongoing professional development to support classroom and ELD teachers. So there's a lot of support. And we're actually also seeing that with our secondary material selection process, that a lot of the publishers are incorporating those scaffolds into the core curriculum, which is awesome. So the next thing we want to talk about to close out the elementary piece is the Early Literacy Success Grant that we received to do a lot of the work that we're doing. And for this grant, there were five requirements. The first one was that we had to select and purchase evidence-based instructional materials, which we did. These materials that we selected were from the ODE-approved list of instructional materials. The second requirement is that we provide a professional development for teachers, which is evidence-based as well. And we did that in spring of 2024, as well as we had grade-level PLCs throughout this year. The third requirement is that we had to have academic coaches. And in the elementary level, we have academic coaches in all 34 schools that support core instruction and the implementation of the new curriculum. The fourth requirement is this concept of high dosage tutoring, which we have implemented in 12 Title I schools this year. We work with two vendors, Reading Results and Ignite Reading. And all the schools that we selected were selected based on their spring 2024 third grade OSAS data. And then the students that we selected for the high dosage tutoring, we selected using Star Screener and other diagnostic reading assessments. And then student growth is measured using the Star Screeners. And I think that ends the elementary piece.
All right. So this is just a snapshot of what we're going to cover next. We'll discuss assessment, the language arts adoption for the secondary level, professional development, and then we'll speak to intervention, all for 612. Okay, so we'll start with assessment. We are also using our Star Screener for our students from sixth through 12th grade. We are in the middle, well, we're actually wrapping up the winter data collection. So we're in the middle of the data literacy part. We've got these, these reports. Now, how do we start to look at where are we seeing high growth? And that should help us zero in on what the instructional strategies that teachers are using. We've been talking with principals about the expertise that we know that we have in the Beaverton School District. We, we don't need to hire an expert to come and teach our teachers how to read. We've got expertise. One of the exciting parts about our data is it's another way for us to find these teachers that are helping us see not just where are the students at right now, but what does the growth look like? We know that some teachers, some students are going to begin well below grade level. What is the growth? Some students can't afford to make one year's worth of growth in a year. They need to make two, 2.5, three. And we have teachers that are doing that. And we're really zeroing in now with our data on some of our instructional practices here in, in Beaverton. Our goal is about the core. We need to make sure that 80% of our students are nearly at, at or above grade level. And those are the high leverage points for instruction.
Okay, so then moving to the, we are currently in the midst of 612 Language Arts, English Language Proficiency Adoption Process. And we're, we're very much in our, in the planning mode around what this is going to look like for our implementation year next year, similar to, to what we did with elementary. Lots of that work involves looking at the state standards and discussing the revision and refinement of learning targets, as well as rubrics that are aligned to those standards. Another part of that work is reviewing the ODE, ODE-approved list of instructional materials. That would, that happened at the beginning of, of January, where we heard from all of our publishers on that list and then selected two. And actually, just this week, we have confirmed our, our pilot teachers at the 612 level. We have almost every single school pilot, with pilot teachers. So we have two publishers that will be piloted in our middle and, and high schools for about six weeks, three weeks each. And the goal is then, of course, to make a recommendation to this board in April of 2025 of what, what we recommend should be implemented in our, in our middle and high schools. Alongside that is a great deal of planning of simultaneously planning of professional development, which thankfully this year, we're looking at a sequence of days for our middle and high school teachers that will include best practices around the adolescent literacy framework, that will also include a work, a focus around co-teaching and multilingual learners, and then the specific publisher training. So on the new materials. There we go. There we go. So this is a, this is a high-level view of, of much of the PD that we're planning for our middle and high school teachers. And we have the opportunity this year with our middle and high school teachers to do a series, which is really exciting, and an opportunity to, to address much of what you see on that list. Leading into the summer, we found last year with our K-5, it was, it was extremely helpful for teachers to have the training and the opportunity to work with those materials before the start of the summer versus trying to do that during the pre-service week, which you can imagine is, is already very full. So building foundational skills, data literacy, and strategies for multilingual students are really the core, the core focus for that time. So, thank you. The other piece that I think is really important to address for our secondary students that I'm certain you hear a lot about is that we have students at our secondary level who have a lot of needs in, in reading. And so we, we want to acknowledge that even though our focus is, is core instruction and making sure that our core instruction is, is meeting needs, we also need to tend to students who have those gaps. And so what I wanted to share is around some of the targeted and intensive supports that we're working with right now. One of which is, is WinTime, which you have heard a great deal about over the last year in our middle schools, which is an opportunity during the school day to provide targeted instruction in specific areas based on data. And so because we have the Star Screener, we have the opportunity to respond to that data during that time. And so core, core teachers across multiple content areas, for example, are taking a focus based on the data. So as an example, I oversee one middle school that took a very specific lens for a period of time on informational reading. And all the Win teachers were spending time focused in that area so that students were receiving that additional instruction in that. We also have some tools that are, are targeted for our secondary students. As you might imagine, it's really important to have tools and materials that secondary students are interested in, in using. That looks different than our elementary students. And so Lexia Power Up is one tool that, this is our second year in using that tool as a tier-two intervention at both middle and high schools. And it does have the capacity to actually go down as far as the kindergarten level as needed. It's adaptive. It has an adaptive portion that students do online. And then actually, the program will, will give the teacher a lesson plan to use with a small group of students. So the benefit of a tool like that is that you have some online work that's independent, but you also have the opportunity to get support from a teacher. And then we are, of course, looking at other targeted interventions that are, that are more appropriate for our middle and high school students. So to close the, where we started, which is in thinking about our multi-tiered system of support and the, and the really intentional focus that we're taking on strengthening core instruction through instructional practices, high-quality materials, and professional learning systems, all of which are necessary to create a very strong system where we're, we, we can support strong reading and writing skills for our students. And that is happening simultaneously to identifying and supporting both targeted and intensive support. So both are happening, but what we also are recognizing as a system is that our data shows our core really needs work. And that's, that does take really intentional time and professional learning. So we're dedicating quite a bit to making sure that that is very strong for all students. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Susan.
First of all, thank you so much for coming back and finishing up the presentation. I know there's probably a ton of questions. I have a few. One is, how does the attendance of students relate to the STAR system? And getting those students that might be behind caught up? And do you see a correlation between attendance and? And so, I mean, so there might be two issues going on at the same time. And I didn't know how we're addressing that, or if there's a plan to address that.
Yeah, yes. Attendance definitely impacts student learning in general. What the screener does for us is simply measure where students are. If, if you're, if I'm understanding your question about us assessing fall, winter, spring, if the question was, well, what if the student was absent and we didn't have their score for one of those windows?
No, I think I'm going to, I mean, it's a little bit broader than that. So it's not necessarily about the STAR system. It's more about the fact that if students aren't in school, how are they able to, I mean, or if they're not, and how about this? If they're not there on a regular basis would be more of the concern. How do we get them caught up? So.
So thank you for the question, Director Greenberg. And I think when we, when we look at that piece, which is such a challenge and, and is very clear, that is something that we need to be working on, we, we need to look systemically at what we're doing in the district to address absenteeism. And through the district-wide absent, you know, attendance initiative, in addition to schools with their school improvement plans and the, the goal that is related to social emotional learning that has, that is directly often and indirectly related to attendance, that is really where we are addressing that issue, which then will lift up all students regardless of the subject area, content, or the challenges.
So, I mean, I guess, my point is they're all connected.
Yes.
So I appreciate that. And then I have a question because I don't know and how this works. And I should know, but I don't. So this is specifically about curriculum in, at the high school level and probably middle school too. In terms of, I know that you were talking about, you know, purchasing of, you know, books to, for, you know, ELA and all that. How does that relate to like individual teachers that also have a list of literary books that they challenge their students with? Like, how do, I don't know how that works together. And I'm just trying to understand it. So are the books used, I guess, basically in all of these classrooms, or does it depend?
So that, that is specific really to the core question, which is, is definitely on our, you know, on our list of, of what's critical. And that is making sure that we have a core adoption for both middle and high school that's strong. And right now, the, the classrooms also have classroom libraries, which I think is what you might be referring to. That has been highly successful and teachers love that. That offers an opportunity to match students to books, to let students choose genres that they're interested in reading, that are highly motivating for students. That does need to pair with explicit instruction. And so a core adoption should tend to both of those things. It should tend to, we have materials that will allow us to teach the, the skills and strategies that students need to be proficient readers. And it also should leave space for, and we heard this very clearly in the data from our teachers, that they want an opportunity to continue to have a robust classroom library. So I, I will give you an early preview that, that will be on our, our ask for just a replenishment of, of keeping books current, making sure that they have levels that tend, that really address all levels of learners in their classroom. But that has to pair next to really strong core instruction. They have to work together.
And I may be getting in the weeds, and you can just tell me that. Do not, I do not take offense. I want to understand, so are they learning grammar? Is that part of what the core is? I mean, is it back to basics? I mean, when we say back to basics, I mean, that's how I learned a very long time ago. And I'm just curious if that's when we're talking core. Is that what we're doing is like, we're looking at, you know, part of it is literacy and part of it is, okay, literacy is also writing? So I just wanted to understand that piece.
Yes, it's all of those things. So a, a strong core curriculum will address all of the, the state standards and tend to the skills and strategies that students need to be, in this case, for this area, need to be proficient readers, writers, thinkers, speakers. So all of that is addressed in the core curriculum.
We have a little bit of more time, but Sunita or we said Ugana? Sunita and then, Sunita and then Tammy. I'm holding Ugana in my heart because she's not here right now.
Thank you so much. This is really exciting to see all this progress that you guys are doing. You know, you mentioned that Star Screener gives a status, like how the kid is doing in the class. And the Lexia Power Up gives them the support system for that. Is that true? And how does it work? Does it work well together? So that's my first question on Lexia. Like, how does it pair up with Star Screener? So if you find that a kid has a weakness or something, does it give you a lesson for that? And then you said that they can also get the teacher support. Is that an online teacher support or is that one-on-one? Because, I mean, there are so many kids in the classroom. How does the teacher manage that? And then I have one more question.
So for Lexia Power Up, it, the, the intent is really, it is a, what we would call a targeted tier-two intervention. And it is intended to focus on the areas that the Star Screener has identified are needed for that student. It's adaptive, so it will respond to what the students can and cannot do in the program. And it will do some instruction online. And then the program itself will also give the teacher areas to, a lesson plan, as you said, to, to teach to either individual students or a small group of students that, that are clearly needed. So it actually is an in-person lesson that would be given by the teacher. So the, the work right now, we've defined time in the middle school schedule right now for that. So WinTime, it has dedicated time for students to be in Lexia Power Up. Good news. High school, more challenging. So still working to define that time.
Do, does the parents or the caregivers have access to the lesson plans that are being given to the kids so that they can be also engaged in that learning path for them? Is it?
That, not currently, but that's, that is a, an excellent point that, that we should address in thinking about Lexia Power Up. I also want to mention that the goal will be, as we look at further tools, we would always want to have more than just one tool. We would want to have other tools in our bucket of tier-two so that we can target individual needs. It's not about a specific, that specific program. That's one that we know about right now that we're finding success with. But the goal next year and going forward would be to identify additional tools in our tier-two and tier-three buckets so that we have a variety of tools to address individual student needs.
Yeah, thank you. And my other question was on that literacy grant Toshica was mentioning. Did I hear that right? You said it has five requirements. But I only saw four here.
Yes.
What's the fifth one?
Yes, oh, sorry, I didn't, the fifth one was extended learning opportunities, which includes after-school activities and summer school. Anything else you want to add?
Okay, yes, that's the fifth requirement of the grant that we have to address. We have to offer extended opportunities.
So we are doing the summer school. Are we doing, what about the after-school? Do we have things for that?
We're working on that. I actually think it would be great if, if Jen DiMartino would share her after-school program, which is exactly what we want to be thinking about.
Thank you.
So my after-school program is one and a half hours, two days a week. My student success coach, my academic coach, and some classroom teachers and some paras are able to stay after with the kids and work with them on, we use Lexia, we use the lessons that are generated by Lexia. We, we also have some other tools that we use. And then we find the targeted lessons. The academic coach and my student success coach sit together once a week and they, they have a folder for each child and they decide what skill and strategy they're going to work on. And then sometimes it's the parent educators, sometimes it's the classroom teachers that work with them. And they get, you know, about two groups on reading and one mass, and then some playtime and snack time so that it feels fun and engaging. And then there's an activity bus that takes them home at the end. It's a, it's an expensive program that this year is funded by BEF for us. So we are super thrilled and lucky to have that money.
Open for all the students or is that?
It isn't because it's such a targeted intervention. We, we use the data from STAR to decide who would benefit the most and we offer it to those families first. And then we, we have a waiting list and rolling in and out of there as needed. But kids, once they get in, they love it and they stay.
Perfect. It's a good start.
Thank you.
Tammy?
Thank you. And I just want to remind you all, at the end of the presentation during this, the board meeting, the business meeting, the emotions that all of us, at least me, were feeling about the intense like appreciation for all this work and how excited we are that we're, feel like we're on the right track. So I just wanted to like bring that back into the space because some of you got unsolicited hugs. I just, it was, it was really great. And so, again, really appreciate all this work. I do have some questions about the, the kids that aren't learning to read by third grade. My guess is that fourth and fifth grade teachers are kind of used to having to still teach reading. We talked a little bit about some of that happening in middle school with the WinTime. school with the WINTIME. Um, so during WINTIME, um, does teaching reading take up all of a teacher's attention during that session such that they're not able to kind of help other students? Um, are the teachers in middle and high school provided PD around how to teach reading? It it might be something that they really haven't encountered, um, in their professional career. So how are we supporting teachers? Do we have enough resources, like, say for WINTIME? Like, do, would we need a reading coach in, do we have so many kids needing that in a sixth grade WINTIME such that we would potentially add an additional person in there? So the teacher can be spread across other student needs. Um, so PD and just support for six through 12, learning to read needs of our students. Don't know who that question's for, sorry. Just kind of like throw it out. Yeah.
So you hit on really important things there. The, the WINTIME right now is is a divided time. So there, there is opportunity for students to do some other things. Um, there are also some math work that that's happening during that time, um, as well as social emotional learning and some other key components that we've identified is critical for that time. The academic coaches at middle school are playing a really critical role in supporting, um, exactly what you described, um, support for teachers in leading lessons in some targeted areas of of reading and writing. And so there's a lot of front loading for those teachers to to support that. The adolescent literacy framework, uh, highlights the importance of disciplinary lit, um, literacy. And that really looks like, why is it so important that all, that in every classroom in our secondary schools, we're teaching literacy? Which is not really an old idea, but is really critical to bring forward now, um, as we're seeing these needs. So what does reading and science look like? What does reading and social science look like? That's critically important. And thankfully, the adolescent literacy framework is is highlighting that work. The PD that we've outlined for this spring for our, our language arts teachers is going to do some of that work around teaching our middle and high school teachers. What does it look like to teach foundational skills? Right? I was a high school language arts teacher. I didn't learn how to teach foundational skills. And so that's going to be critically important professional learning for our secondary educators. And we will need to continue to do more to extend to, um, student, uh, teachers outside of just language arts. So.
One follow up to that, Dr. Carpenter, um, and it's a little bit, um, a broader view of WINTIME. Um, with it being a brand new piece of that, um, middle school schedule, we know, just like with anything new that we're implementing, um, that that implementation science does play a part in what that trajectory looks like. That's usually typically that means there's a little bit of a dip, you know, and then we start, we we continue to learn, engage in conversations, and then move and advance forward stronger together in whatever that that topic is. And in this case, with with WINTIME, one of the things I just wanted to add to Robin's very thoughtful response is that we are in ongoing, I mean, because this is new to all of us, um, it is really important, uh, to be engaged in ongoing conversations with our union partners, um, to get, um, the association, the leadership, and in our labor management meetings, just as one example, WINTIME is something that comes up frequently and and we're constantly checking in and then monitoring and adjusting what that looks like. So knowing that it takes, it takes some time to get something new like that really dialed in. But, um, we, we believe that it's, it's very, um, very much worth it, um, and to continue to engage in those conversations.
I, I think WINTIME in concept is great, and I love that we're adapting and learning from what we're doing. Um, question, maybe mostly for Jennifer or, um, your, the K through five execs. Um, this is a little bit, I don't want to say radically different way to teach reading, but it's significantly different. Um, and that, how is that being received by our K through five teachers? Um, I, my hunch is you've had, you know, full buy in and everyone's excited, but it's a lot of work. So just like, you know, what is the experience of your teachers, um, on the ground with this new curriculum? Um, either one of you, I guess.
Great. Um, yes, it is a big lift. And the teachers are diving in. Um, they, they are excited that to, uh, right before I came here, I was in one of those PLC planning meetings that was described to you as professional development that's ongoing that we're providing. Um, and we talk about what's going well and what are the challenges. Um, but it's really focused on those foundational skills, K through five. Um, and so teachers are having to kind of rethink some of the things that they were previously doing. They had, um, pieces of of this were going on all the time, but but now it's very, I think, what, last time we had some words explicit and systematic. Um, so there's programmatic way that they're moving through these. And so they're just trying to learn that and, um, see how they can incorporate it. Things that they say are going well are the structured literacy, the lessons you saw, and vocabulary instruction. Kids are getting a lot, they're building their vocabulary vocabulary very, um, rapidly. So those are two things that they described as going well.
Yeah, I completely agree with that. Uh, at the PLCs that I have been to, uh, in the schools that I support, I have been hearing even since the fall, when they started implementing the curriculum, and as Jen was saying, it was challenging for teachers because it is always, you know, implementing a new curriculum is learning it and get adjusted to probably even new practices and new components from the curriculum that they didn't have before, like the foundational skills component, especially for three, five. So they were getting adjusted to that. But they, for the teachers that were implementing it, um, were saying that they were seeing huge results and very positive results in their classrooms. And I was at, uh, those PLCs where they were excited about the growth that they were seeing in, at, with the students in fifth grade. And they were saying for sure they are going to be better prepared for middle school. We didn't have these resources before. Um, so we, even with our practices, like, we didn't get these, uh, results with the students. So now that we have the resource, the resources, we are seeing the growth. And that was the fall. And now we are starting with the second round, uh, round of the PLCs. Um, and I hope, you know, we, we continue with those, uh, with that implementation as it is.
Sorry, I should have said TOSA instead of just K through five exec. Thank you so much for the answer.
Any, any other questions? Comments?
I didn't know if I raised my hand and you were raised at the same time.
We have a couple, a couple more minutes before they have to.
Yeah, I, I don't have any, uh, major question. I just want to thank you for the work that we're doing. I think it's really good to surface, um, the, the details of this has been a, a very important, critical issue that a lot of our community is concerned about. Um, and not just our community, the entire state is concerned about how we're responding. Uh, and I, I think this is, um, good evidence of us, you know, trying to build the, the structure that hopefully will be successful, um, years forward. Uh, and I, I look forward to more detail on how we're doing and how we're improving, uh, as we go forward. So thank you.
Melissa?
I'll build off of the idea of this is a state, you're, you're a, a case study of the complexity of something as it seems simple, teach kiddos to read. But there's so much pressure at the classroom level, building level, and at the state level. And so if we're trying to increase the performance or change the performance of a student, we have to change what we're doing in the classroom, which means our school leaders need to be able to know how to coach teachers, to do things differently, and that the district office has to do things, everything has to be done differently. And then the state is giving us guidelines that we're held accountable for. So we're holding ourselves accountable, and then the state is accountable too. So you're juggling so many pieces. And when we've done the school tours, we've heard that, um, the teachers and the staff are really, it's really nice to see that reading is a focus in the school improvement plans. Everybody seems really excited about the STAR screening data. And we've heard that the high school level too, I was kind of surprised. I thought that we'd have a little bit more like, a little less enthusiasm at the high school. But it's been interesting to hear the, um, high school folks share with us that they're seeing the connection. And it seems obvious, but until you think about it and have time to reflect about, they can't engage in the curriculum if they aren't able to read. Or if, so the STAR screening data, even at the high school level, is really being powerful. But finding the time to do that collaboration and that reflection is really tough. So then that goes back to what you were saying, Dr. Gordy, about the complexities of how do you schedule this PD time? And how do, there's so many pieces. So, um, just a lot of gratitude for all of you, no matter how messy it is, that you're jumping into it because our kids really do need that change, right? We do need to, um, um, hold ourselves and them accountable for really being great readers. So thank you for the work.
And I just wanted to thank you as well. It's exciting to see how our communities come together to, um, see the, around literacy. It's in our strategic plan. It's now part of our, you know, school improvement plans, several of them, many of them have, um, reading as one of those goals. They had it last time. And sometimes some of, some have switched to math because that's also important, you know. But we have it in our, um, school improvement plans. We now have elementary curriculum. We're working on our secondary curriculum. We're aligning our, um, the needs of our English language learners as well in our multi, our dual language programs. In that, not as something separate, but together, we're also, um, it was great to see that our secondary, um, language adopt, or literacy adoption materials, that's going to be completed this year. We have the professional development for our staff. Um, we've started tutoring in the elementary, in a dream world, somehow magical funding would appear, even though today doesn't seem to be telling, telling us that. But, um, where we can have tutoring for our high schoolers too, and our secondary students, in that we have these, um, more, we do have, we're hearing that we will probably have summer learning funds, but, um, that these summer learning funds could continue to somehow extend to more learning opportunities for secondary and elementary schools. So it's kind of across the board. But it's exciting to see where we are now and where we can get. And I'm excited to see the results of our students, um, and the hard work of our educators, um, that are leaning into all this new learning and all these new materials, um, for our kids, you know. I think we talked about it at our last meeting, where reading is a fundamental right of every child. Um, and so, or, you know, um, and it's something that we as a board have talked about and believe in as well. So thank you for your time. I know, well, you have to go too, but I appreciate you.
We're going to move on to our second item on our agenda. And Sarah's passing out the agenda so that everybody has a copy of that. Um, so we're going to bring Erica up for our board development. And Erica, I may need to step out for a meeting for partly toward the end of it, um, and then come back. So I'm just letting the board know too. We'll give Erica a minute to get settled in. Hello, bienvenida. You might need to use a microphone. Just grab one. You, you can travel with it as you'd like. Just press the button to make it green.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. This is a little weird. Oh, that's okay. Um, well, hello, everybody. It's been a little while since I've been back and seen you all. So I'm happy to be back here. Um, you know, Beaverton's also near and dear because I have my nieces and nephews that, um, attend Beaverton School District. So I don't know if you guys knew that, but, um, so I'm back today because you're all seasoned school board members now. I just, I was reminiscent on the first time that I came and talked to you all. And now being like, wow, this is campaign season now again. And it is, you're in it. Like, this is like the culmination of the first time you, you came in, served, and everything that you've learned. And I'm really excited to come back because as I was, um, talking to board leadership and Perry and, um, Dr. Valdara's, and thinking about like where you are as a team now versus where you were before, and like what are the themes that I wanted to, um, talk about? And then people can't see me if I'm over, over on the corner. Um, so I want, I was, I was thinking about, um, last time that I came, one of the things that I wanted to kind of touch back or connect you all back was this idea of this, um, forming, storming, norming, performing, if you all remember that. Um, uh, so today, this is just the agenda of like the topics that I'm going to be covering. Um, really cute, uh, overview about that storming, norming, performing. Talk a little bit about governance, um, get some feedback from you all, and also, uh, talk about common detours in governance and what can get in the way. And, um, think about next steps for your, for you as a board, based on the, the things that we cover today. Thank you. So my goals today is to help us all be on the same page about what I see sometimes as a common detours. And the reason being is, this board could look different in the next election cycle. And when you make those changes, the foundational pieces of onboarding potentially new people or bringing in new people into your culture that you've established is, um, really important in moving you quicker through that forming, norming, storming phases. So we hope to look at maybe identify if there's gaps in, in the processes that you all have as a board. Um, and then also think about strati, uh, strategies to build relationships. Currently with your fellow board members, but also thinking of the future of how do we build those relationships quickly so that we can help each other do this work really efficiently. So with that, this was the, the little image that you all had in the, uh, before. And if you remember, one thing that I mentioned back then, when we were talking about the different stages of becoming a team, is that, uh, every single time you add a new person, you have to start back at the beginning. And so as you prepare ahead for maybe potential changes, that it'd be no surprise that you have to go back into that, into this process. And the beginning is that forming where there's really a focus on like small talk and those generalities and niceties and very superficial level communication with a team because you're just getting to know each other. And as you move into that storming phase, this is where the real kind of conflict could come out, where there is, you know, um, maybe potential personal agendas that come out. Maybe there's a, a, a control or power dynamic that happens. And then you get into the norming where you actually start functioning as a team and, and with the goal of getting into performing, where you are giving praise, you're, uh, giving critical feedback. There's a very direct, straight talk and opportunity to, um, have conversations and resolve conflict. So when you think about somebody, a new person getting added or potentially changing the dynamics, you're going to have to go through this process again. And thinking about, um, also what are some potential areas that we could look at improving so that you have a solid foundation when you have this, when you enter the stage? The goal is to quickly move from forming and, and storming into norming and performing. And as you can see on this little graph showing how effective a team is, is the, is when you're in that performing space, right? And so the quicker you can move in, that's where the working agreements that you've all worked on before, your board policies, things that help you understand how to engage with one another, and what are the processes that exist, really come in handy in helping you move quickly through that. So I made this little, uh, before I go into this little graphic, one of the things that I wanted to put at the front of your mind is that the way that you all work together is really, has a big impact in the organization. And just a reminder that the dynamics at the very top of an organization trickle down, um, to the rest of the staff. Like, I was remembering about, you know, how, how staff are looking at us and how we behave and interact with one another, how we resolve conflict, how we're able to be effective, how we work as a team, as a board. And so when things are not working well, the impacts of that is there is a lack of confidence in the organization. That can also, uh, prevent you from attaining your goals that you set out to achieve for you all. Um, it could also impact the passing of bonds and levies if there's, there's a perception of inefficiency or, uh, or, um, just a, a lot of conflict and there's a lack of trust, um, in the organization. It could also impact your partnerships that you have with other agencies, nonprofit organizations. It could also impact your partnerships that you have with other agencies, nonprofit organizations. People that are a- aligned with you to accomplish a mission might not see that the board is working cohesively. And so they, they might be like, well, I don't like what's going on in the news. That's the worst thing, right? When we have stories in the media, that erodes that confidence. And also, like I mentioned, the staff morale, but the superintendent longevity. I don't know if by the last time that I came, I think we were in the process of getting our new superintendent around there. But we had Mike for like fourteen years before that, right? And I did not know how valuable that was until he was gone. And even though we have somebody that came within the same organization, he had to restart building all the relationships and connections with all the other organizations that are, that work with us. And you have to start from scratch. And right now, I think the the tenure is like around three years, which is not very long of how long a superintendent lasts in a district. And every time you have to go out or recruit or do that, you start all over um having to build those relationships. And um I can't like just highlight how important that is because uh things that are happening, all the uh conversations and relationship building that often we as board members don't have the bandwidth to do, our superintendent is making those connections and building those bridges with other organizations and and our staff as well. So there's a lot of reasons why like this work for you all to work efficiently is so important and what that message carries out into our larger community when they see you all working really effectively. So this is a little, a little uh uh image here of of you and your fellow board members on the path to governance, right? And the ways that you are, the things that you're responsible for and how you set the vision for the district around specifically for Beaverton, you know, around belonging, believing, achieving um for our students. And often what happens is as board members and you, as you get new board members potentially, you'll see this, this happen again where there's potential detours that happen, where we end up uh moving or shifting what our role is into other areas that are not our role. And that can cost time and money for our district sometimes. And even for us, especially uh uh now I'm thinking about it as board members, it's unfortunate that there has been some cases where boards have made decisions that impacted the district negatively and it ended up costing, um it was a financial cost as well. But um one of the things that I wanted to mention around the the distractions that can happen is that there's often this power dynamic that we are all very aware that we are elected officials and there's nobody really coming out like monitoring if you're doing your role. And and we really have that, that role is for us to do amongst one another. It's really difficult for staff to tell you like, hey, you're not in your role or your lane and we're trying to correct you. And that is really uh challenging. And so it's up to like individually you as a board members to kind of call in your other board members. And you can help doing that by having really good working agreements and establish like roles and responsibilities. And now that you're seasoned board members, you're going to have to exercise this as a potentially new board members come in. So what are the really top areas where we can get distracted or we have uh detours happening? I'll get over here. I'll come back to that slide. But here are the three areas that I see happens a lot. We can get sucked into problem solving um as board members. And unfortunately, what we end up creating is circumventing processes or creating new processes. And I'll go into detail of these areas in a little bit. But this, these are the areas where I see especially new board members or where there might be a little bit more um inefficiencies happening at this level is either we get into problem solving as a board member, we get into the operations of the organization too in the weeds of, you know, information requests or uh agenda topics. We get super detailed in there. And then the other area is we don't make investments in um building our interpersonal relationships with other board members. And so by the time you do have a conflict, there isn't any trust built to kind of call in each other or like, hey, hey, this happened at the board meeting, I just want to talk to you about this. There, we haven't done that work. And so we end up um not having a pathway to resolve conflict in a, in a healthy way. So I'm going to go back one slide because one of the things that I think about of what, like what gets in the way for us when we think about doing these, this work about being efficient board members, sometimes, like I mentioned, we get, we get caught up with distractions that are not necessarily in our role or in our uh responsibility. There might be communication gaps or there's also um a lack of clarity around expectations or a process. And um until you go through the the process, you don't realize that there was a gap. And you're like, oh, wait, uh we go step A, B, and C, and then what happens after that? And we didn't write that out in our agreements. And so now there's like, and then an opportunity for interpretation or an opportunity because a gap exists that we don't have a closing loop on this process. We can also and accidentally end up focusing on a single issue, especially I was thinking about campaigning season and um as board members, you know, you have your, your talking points and you have your, this is the, this is why I'm running. These are my top three things. And um you run as an individual, but once you get on the board, you're part of a team. And the one, two, three things that I thought I was going to do, I realized like, oh, everybody else has different one, two, three things. And the district actually already has something in place or, you know, you start trying to figure out how you fit into the larger picture. And so this can be an area um that is also a little bit challenging is we don't realize that we inherit running an entire organization and not just like one issue that we might be really passionate about. But you're talking about, there's like twenty seven schools that are under here. There's all these things that are happening in the district and there's a broader picture that's happening, right? And then it also, unfortunately, when things get really, really bad, the board member, really good member, board members end up leaving. And it becomes really hard to uh come into these environments and do the work that you really are here to do. And um if, but if you go back later, I'll send the slides, but that image about the storming, norming, and performing, when you're at the performing level, people are having fun. There's humor. You can tell that people are happy to do the work that they're here to do because they're having fun doing it. And so um it's, it's really, you can kind of see like as you reflect, like where are we at in different spaces and times, where have we been as a board? But we're going to do a couple exercises that I brought for you all um today to kind of help us get back on track. So with these little detours that happens, the, one of the ones that I wanted to talk about um is problem solving. So the challenge here, like I mentioned earlier, is you want to solve problems right at the lowest level. Because when you, and this doesn't just happen like in school boards. There's all other organizations that this happens where um somebody will put in a complaint at the highest level, right? And now, very well intentioned person at the highest level is like, well, let me figure out how I can solve this situation. But I don't know this process or I don't have this information. So now I need to educate myself and then I have to request information. And I, I end up creating a bigger situation than it was to refer the person to the appropriate channel to solve. And now it's end up taking more time. I'm having to educate myself. I'm having to create these processes. And there's a perception now out in uh this community member or constituents' mind that the way to solve the problem is to contact at this level instead of going through the channels that you have in place, right? So that can become uh an issue when you, and especially if it's time sensitive, then we're putting in additional time to resolve the conflict for, for this person. And we are creating a new process that didn't exist now that circumvents all the other process that you had already put in place. And when it gets, uh when it's some, especially when there's like a, a complaint process, you all have very specific roles that you play in a complaint process. And you don't want to kind of muddy the waters about what your role is and responsibility. If something were to get to your level, you have a role to play. If you start kind of going into, that might um, that might impact your ability to be able to serve in that role that you have. And the thing that I want to remem- remind you all also is that your specific job or duty and responsibility cannot be delegated to anybody else, right? Like, your role as a school board member and what you're responsible for doing, nobody else in the district can do it because they're not elected, right? So when we get away from our role into this problem solving, we are distracted now from doing the actual work that we are set out here to do as board members. Especially right now, I put on there on the camp- campaign trail. This is an area where when you're out campaigning, you're going to interact with the public so much more, right, than in your n- normal um board tenure. And of course, this is this prime time, I got you in person. Let me tell you about all the issues that I have going on or everything that's wrong, right? And ensuring that people are guided to the right process or to the right um contact to get their problems resolved, that is our role. It's really important, and I can't state this enough, how um you as an individual, right? We, I can't solve anything as an individual board member. Even if it was an issue that was a board policy issue, I can't make any promises or, you know, have, have anything out there that I'm making a decision on behalf of the board. I don't represent the whole board. I am just one person. And all of those things, I just wanted to highlight in this problem solving. So with that, I have a couple of scenarios. And mind you, these are scenarios that, uh from my ex- personal experience. So it, it just so happens though that a lot of these scenarios, as I go, I've gone to other school districts and presented. They're like, well, this happened here. And I was like, see, this is normal. This is common that we all have these experiences and we also have different ways of interpreting and also resolving it. And so with each other, we're going to kind of pair up a little bit here. But I would want you to look at these scenarios of situations that have happened and how, what is the best course of action, thinking strategically as a board? When these situations arise, what is the best course of action to help you not get into problem solving mode? What do you think is a recommendation? So we're going to have, you pair up. You're going to read your scenario with your partner. And then you're going to come up with possible solutions and share out with the larger group around what you think is um, is appropriate kind of course of action afterwards. And um, let me see, I have a couple scenarios where I think. I'm going to walk over there and hand you over. So we're going to take a little, I'm going to get off the screen here, but. Maybe for this one, just the person that's like next to you. And then when we, we have another exercise, then we'll move around so you have opportunity to work with someone you haven't worked with. So you have opportunity to work with someone you haven't worked with. Okay, I'm gonna have you guys come back. From our chatting. And we're gonna go in order of the, the letters of the scenarios. And then you can all um, see how, how, how each other responds. And if you feel like there was something else you wanna add to what they did, or like something else that you think could also be added to the course of action, feel free to like chime in after you each kind of share out. Okay. Justice and Karen, are you guys ready? Yeah? Okay. All right, let's go, let's have um, read scenario A, and then tell us what you all came up with.
Um, so scenario A, uh, you receive multiple complaints from parents about a class or program that is being eliminated. This is also a class or program that you hold near and dear. What is the best response uh, strategy slash action for the board?
Oh, um, one of the things I do that when a complaint comes to us is first of all, tell them about our complaint policy. And um, I listen to them. Uh, if, if they are, uh, they're willing to, I mean, they're, they're coming because they wanna share what's going on. But I tell them that if it comes, we are, the board is the last when it comes to us. And that's um, um, and we wanna be fair to both the sides and listen with fairness. So first, they should be going to the lowest level of principal or teacher and then uh, the superintendent. And then it comes to us, you know? If, if all those levels do not help them, then it comes to us, not directly to us. And um, i- if I feel about, about it and it never comes to us, I always use that, my one-on-one time, to find out what's going on, you know, like the backstory about it. If, if it is important, just so that we know that we are not, um, I mean, that, that voice that they are sending to us is not just going into a vacuum. We are actually listening and we are trying to be good advocates for them too, if we feel that it is a fair complaint. That's, that's my thinking.
Yeah, and I, I agree, we agreed on this. I think the other thing that I um, felt was important is the um, just the listening. And, you know, I, I don't need to take what I learn and run and try and solve the problem. And there's so much value um, in people being hurt, feel like they're being hurt. So, um, the balance is listening versus problem solving. And so, for me, I, 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 I lean a lot on listening. And so, um, and I, I feel like that goes a long way in the community. And, and while the process plays itself out through, you know, starting at the lowest level. And then, if it comes up to the board, great, you know, and I, I feel, I'll feel like I have um, uh, I'm able to make an informed decision about, you know, what's happening based on the listening and then, you know, the district um, presenting stuff, so.
Anything else you all would add or suggest? Yeah, go ahead.
There was something that Tom, who was a past.
Sorry, Susan was, had her hand.
Oh, sorry, I just say, go ahead, Susan.
I do think it's a good idea as you're uh, taking this all in to make sure that the board chair and the superintendent's aware of um, the complaint. Just so, and there, you know, therefore they can reach out to that particular parent if necessary, or they make sure they get to the proper channels. I mean, listening and hearing their concerns is important as well, but just making sure they get to the right place.
Go ahead.
Um, we had something about that in our scenario too, actually. Um, but I was just thinking of Tom's voice um, when I was a new um, board member. And he kept telling me that when we hear anything that has to do with a complaint, uh, my, this is what he would tell me, but my job is to get them to the right process for the complaint. Whether, and start, start small, like send them back to the school. And then, if they've gone to the school and they're feeling not heard, or then go up the next, figure out what the next step is. And they can have access to the complaint process so that they're aware of what can happen. And then, because at any point that they're sharing their story with me as a board member, then I can't be, I can't do my job as a board member if it comes up to, the com- through the complaint process, to uh, listen in. And I would have to recuse myself when it comes up to the level of the board. And so, that's something that I've held on to since um, when he shared that with me as far as that, my role as a board member. So it's that balancing of listening to our community and not stifling their process so that they can make, I'm not taking away any of their choices of act, course of action in the future.
Thanks. Yeah, did you have something to add, Liza?
Um, I was under the understanding that, so maybe I've been doing this wrong. But if we get information that I listen and I hear and I say, thank you so much, and if it's in person, can I, can I share your information with Gustavo and the chair and the vice chair? So, I get an email and no matter what it is, even if it's a celebration, thank you so much, I, you know, for sharing, I really appreciate you taking the time to share your experience. Because I'm genuinely grateful for people staying engaged with our schools, it's so important. So I wanna validate that because I genuinely appreciate it so much. And then, I say, I'm forwarding this email onto our chair, vice chair and Gustavo. If there's anything else I can do to help, please let me know. And that's the end of it. Because I don't even offer the complaint process, I don't offer, I just, and so, because I'm, I don't wanna blur the lines. I wanna be a vending machine response, not a lottery machine response. So I don't want people to keep trying to pull the lever and get the cha-ching. I wanna be very like, I am here, I heard you, I appreciate you so much. Here's our chair, vice chair and Gustavo. Like it's not, there's no wavering. And so, and I thought that's kind of what we were supposed to do, but.
That's a great, great conversation piece because there's the level where you're trying, I think one suggestion was like, get them to the lowest level and be like, please reach out to your principal or your teacher to make, you know, to, to have me hear a concern. And then there's another approach here where you're like, I'm gonna forward this to Gustavo and Karen so that they can better advise what to do. Which may be to say, please reach out to your principal and teacher. But there's two kind of approaches that you're mentioning. And it's good to have clarity amongst yourselves of like, what is the, which, which do we prefer? And is there a way that we should change this or not change it? Or is it working like it is, where some people feel comfortable saying that? And some people are like, I'm just gonna forward it on to here. These are like kind of the really processes that we have as board members where if we don't, we're not in alignment, it can create sometimes, like be like, well, I thought we were doing this. And then, this is where potential, you know, conflicts could arise or misunderstandings because there was lack of clarity of expectation. So, I mean, that's a great, go ahead.
You know, when your close friends reach out to you, I always give them the complaint process. Because I don't want them to think that I am trying to get away from helping them. So when you, when they see that, that hey, this is actually the policy of Beaverton School District. She's not making this up, that she's trying to get, you know, get us to go to them. It's always, it, I, I do it in a manner that it's not, hey, I wanna help you, but I really wanna help you. Like what Karen was saying, that's what Tom Colette really took, did tell us when we became first the school board members. That always uh, try to not get too involved with the process because you wanna have a um, no conflict of interest or anything like that. You can, you can be able to make, if you wanna vote on something, you cannot say that, oh, I knew all this beforehand. So he always kind of guided us in that manner. And for emails, I do what Susan does say, you know, try to uh, copy superintendent, uh, chair, vice chair, you know, for them to also be aware of what's going on.
I think in the specific scenario, we were talking about a com- like they were complaining. Where it was like a complaint. So that's also something to be like, if somebody's wanting to submit a complaint and they say that on there, I think there's also the like, oh, well, here's the complaint process. But you were saying like, sometimes they just wanna say kudos, or sometimes they just wanna say, hey, just bringing this up to awareness. That's not a complaint, like request process, but you're forwarding that so that there's awareness at the leadership level of like what's happening.
Well, and we were talking about, we're not always sure that the chair, vice chair and Gustavo are, because we're getting the emails just to ourselves, right? And so, if there, even if there is a complaint, I can't do anything about it. We need the guidance, we need Gustavo to know about it. And so, and that, if we're constantly getting um, complaint requests or complaint concerns and folks aren't aware of the complaint process, and he's hearing that because we're forwarding all of them to him, then, oh, I wonder if the staff would like to do some more informational sessions for parents so that they know about the complaint process. So, if we want to have a collaborative experience with our community, it seems like, no matter what, if we're getting information, the chair, vice chair and Gustavo need it too. Because chair and vice chair helps set the agenda. So if they're seeing so many of these come through, or if they've already responded to the person, right? Cause chances are if they're emailing me, chances are chair and vice chair have already received the emails. So they probably already responded. And then, if I'm getting information, it doesn't do anyone any good until Gustavo gets the information. Cause he's the one who, I can help.
Yep, yep. Chair, vice chair, wants any input?
Um, well, I'd say cause it's over, we maybe haven't got to our one yet. But um, the other thing that always comes to mind for me is um, understand that if, if resolution of the complaint, especially complaints, required the direct interaction of like me or one of us every time for even fifteen percent of a thirty plus student population, nothing would ever get done about anything. Because we would have to like, go through and go, oh, that, let me forward that on, right? Like that, i- it's important, I think, for, for, for me to, to also say like, one is the acknowledgement that I've seen something's happening. However, the pathway to get, like, we need all of our processes to be effective to like, do, do the job that we as a district, I'm doing a group, we, as a district, want to do in terms of educating kids. And that means, you know, mistakes are gonna happen, people will make bad choices. That then we have good process to respond to those errors, right? And that, that, that the systems are in place. And because if they're not one, that then points to um, we're not doing a good job with the thing we're managing, right? Um, and, 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 and so that like was the thing that came to mind that i- if you, if we start, if I start thinking, oh, let me go fix it. It's like, I, there's no way I could do this every time someone sent something in, and that wouldn't be. Uh, and also, again, it may be something that might not require a, a, a bunch of work that I'm gonna, that me chasing people around and ask questions, send a bunch of emails, then represents.
Susan?
Question actually, and it, I mean, it's because of the way I used to do things and the way things are done now. So, when I did receive a complaint in the past, I would CC the superintendent and the board chair and the principal. Or I'd forward it on to the principal as well. Is that, and then I don't forward it to the principal anymore. Is that, that basically, is that a thing to do or not to do? Like, when I forward an email that's a complaint about a certain school and they haven't started the process with the principal, is it okay to forward it? That's funny, okay.
For me, as long as we, we understand that we, we hear something from the board or the community member and we get it to the right person, the right person's typically the principal anyway, right? So they're the ones that are gonna go, that's the lowest level, actually the lowest level, the teacher.
Yep.
The teacher to the, the parent, and then the principal or vice principal, depending on the.
Yeah, well, I know, I appreciate that because somewhere I got, I misinterpreted some of uh, the, you know, what we could do or what's, what is appropriate for a school board member to do and what isn't, so.
Hold on. This is why we're here having this conversation exactly for this reason.
Cause I really thought we were, our only job is to make sure Gustavo has everything he needs to be able to do his job well. I don't supervise a principal. And so, me interacting directly with the principal prevents everybody upstream from the principal knowing about a concern, right? Like me, so, tell me.
I forwarded to Gustavo as well. So like, I would be.
It's all about a process, I know, but, so. No, no, you're not, because I stopped doing it, you know, cause I'm thinking, I think it's just like, we need to talk it through, like.
Yeah.
Yeah. What makes sense and what doesn't make sense, it's not like, you're doing it wrong, I'm doing it wrong. It's more of like, what makes sense to do? I think maybe we took things too literally and maybe put things on Gus that, you know, he needs to know about it. So he can share with his staff and then, you know, make sure that whatever is done, his staff make sure that it's taken care of. But the principal may never hear about it because it's all the way up there.
No, they'll always hear about it, so most systems go right to me. So just be honest with you, and all the systems typically just email me, I'll take care of it. And then, it, it really is, how is the feedback loop to the board that it got resolved? I think that's typically the, i- i- and, and that's in every system I worked in. But here, the, every system has a different practice. I think in the end of the day, is how do we get to the lowest level of resolution? And how do we go back to the school board? And, and say that it, it, it's, it's been resolved. Or whatever is the resolution that is.
So is the best practices I'm hearing, like, we've done, we used to do things differently. We've, are, we've tweaked a little bit and we've kind of done things differently. And there's also like, hey, as board leadership, we don't wanna be a bottlenecked as well as like for things getting addressed or issues. That when things come in, they just automatically get forwarded to Gustavo. And he will figure out where it goes? And he will figure out where it goes.
And Chair and Vice Chair.
And of course, CC the Chair, Vice Chair. But that, do you just kick it off to him and you're not trying to figure out who's the Principal of what school so that I can go email them? We're not doing that. We're just sending it off to Gustavo and then he will figure out who to, what is the lowest level that this needs to be solved. And then there'll be a feedback loop um, where Gustavo will communicate back out like, oh, that thing that you guys had, uh, somebody forwarded a concern or complaint. This is how we resolved it. It could be an update, it could be on your one-on-ones, but there'll be a follow-up afterwards. Does that sound?
Okay, that part we haven't, I don't think, I think that's a really complicated, it sounds like, the way you just said it, sounds so simple and pretty, but I think it's really complicated.
I think it's complicated by the size of the system. Because if you have like Portland Public or us or Salem Kaiser, where forty thousand kids, there's three hundred thousand community members that make up our district, is that could be a lot of, right? So it's just hard to, to me, it's, it's the feedback loop to the Board for resolution. I think that's where, I think there's some, same, something maybe in August with the new Board. We can kinda get some resolution in terms of what that looks like as a Board.
Yeah.
What, what you'd like to see?
Yeah. That could be a good conversation. Go ahead, Susan.
And this is really not related to the email complaint, but this is like a process in terms of like a test text that goes out to the Board. And we hear about a situation. And then there's not necessary closure about that situation. So we kinda are left hanging, like, okay, what happened? So I don't know, I mean, sometimes we shouldn't know and sometimes we should know or. So how, how, how do we, you know, if we're being informed about a situation, how do we close the loop so we know the situation was resolved?
I think it's tied to what you just said about creating, working on the feedback loop. Whether it's a concern, whether it's awareness of a situation, but what is the process to come back to the Board later? And that's something that we.
Can I give you an example of, of, of what would be maybe a, a concern? And this hasn't happened here, but it's happened to me before, where we're in the middle of a, of a crisis. And I get constantly communicate, and, and I inform the Board, then the Board, specific Board members want specific information really fast. And we're literally in the crisis as we're going and I'm, and I can't answer your calls or your text messages. That's happened to me before in another system. So just FYI, we're going as fast as we can and I'll try and get you information. But we're dealing with a crisis and we can't, we, we can't communicate with you because we're in the crisis.
Right. I, I don't think I was addressing like to be uh.
But you're looking at the, kind of the, the bow, right? Like, it's very, how do we tie a bow to it? That's where I think we need some help as a Board.
We'll put a pin on that piece.
And I'm wondering, it's kind of on the same, but I'm wondering if um, if appropriate, like we could have it's resolved. And then if appropriate, um, have us in the, in that weekly memo, just a quick brief update of anything that we might need to know. If there's stuff that's confidential, then that's fine, but um, if maybe in the, cause that's, I think that would be helpful. If we're not wondering.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
I'm gonna, we're, that would be something else I'll put in the parking lot and we'll talk to Board Leadership later. I wanna move us on, cause we have, I have one more exercise that I do want you to do before I get out of here and I wanna cover some other stuff. So I'm gonna have you two pick the best scenario that you think would be really good. And then you two pick one of the three that you had and you'll share, so.
The letter, the legal thing or the?
This is very similar to the other one.
Okay.
I think, no?
I don't remember.
So when you're ready, just read the scenario.
Okay, this one is.
I promise after we're done with this, we're gonna take a break.
Okay, this is Scenario B, which is the uh several, which I missed the first time I read it. Staff members email you and other Board members requesting to set up a time to talk regarding their experience challenges. Employees of the district while organizations and open under contract negotiations, what is the best response strategy for the Board? Um, and the first time we read it, I thought one person and then we were like, oh, that's several. So the first thing was first was um, sort of similar to the other thing. If it's a, something that's very specific and like, there's a channel of you have rights, you have employee rights, all kinds of stuff. Where if you start talking to me, I'm not the person that can do that. Um, but then there's a group of people, which only cause now that I've sat in observing, I know that we, we run into a place where if we set up some sort of meeting, we could be violating like labor laws and all sorts of stuff in terms of contract negotiation. So that wouldn't be appropriate as an individual Board member. Um, the other thing we crossed was making sure that, that if I, if I got an email but I didn't know other people got the email, that I checked with leadership that like, I got this email. Did you get this email? Um, because then again, you might be like, oh, I'm just gonna like make some time to hear. And then you realize you actually, like, you all got this message and it wouldn't be appropriate. The um, the other thing again was overall to the um, the recuse, accusing piece. Um, again, this could have a negative impact on the bargaining process for everyone involved. Um, because we don't know, one, as an individual Board member, I'm not empowered to make any decisions on my own. Um, as uh that subset of employees are not empowered to make decisions on their own for the other employees. Um, and then again, if it's about something like actual operational within the district, there, there may be a better place for that to land, for, for the work to get done. Um, for that to be, to be effectuated. And then again, if there's some like, like a whistleblower type of circumstance, a certain scenario, which is a whole other can of like, yeah, we need to get to those right details and not necessarily like, oh, let me run off and set up a thing with you or, or supersede, you know, my own again, that I might, we might be making vulnerable errors around processing outcome if, if there's not communication. Um.
A lot of landmines potentially in that scenario that we don't wanna step on.
I think the one part that we talked about too is.
So if, if they, individual or a group come and they have these issues, like, hey, uh, the best place to go, you know, would be to go talk to, you know, it could be your BEA. They, it's important for them to know. If it, it could be HR, depending on what they're trying to tell you. Um, and it could be the complaint process. So I, as a Board member, um, like you said, during bargaining, it's, it could be direct dealing. Could be seen as direct dealing. And then I would be held liable for that. So I wanna make sure they get their questions answered or their support that they need, whether it's by HR, BEA, um, or their complaint process, depending on what they, but I, I can't solve, that's not my role right now, we're in bargaining, so.
And you can get into personnel issues, it could really affect the bargaining process. And there's trust that could be lost if things, you know, the perception of what was said or what was done can be really detrimental to negotiations. Um, it's a very, yeah, it's a very, go ahead.
Can, I just have a clarifying question. So would you email back to the group or to the folks suggesting, please reach out to HR, please reach out to BEA, please work with the complaint process? Or would you thank them for their email and forward to Gustavo? And the Chair and Vice Chair?
I think maybe that was, was um, like, forward this to Board Leadership and uh, to Gustavo. And then like, if, again, once we confirm that it was, like, since this was sent to everybody, under our policy, Board Leadership would do the like, hey, we got your email about this issue. We're sending it to the proper channels. Thank you for communicating. But so like me as the individual, if I, especially if I thought I had it on my own, I would forward it to the Leadership. And if any, if I'd all say, I got your message, forward it to portions that should, you know, should follow up. But again, like I, understanding our policy, I wouldn't send that other email because Board Leadership should send the like, the email for us as a group.
Go ahead.
Um, and just for our Board, one of the things, um, in many spaces, I am, well, I am the Board Chair. Um, but I also wanna make sure that it's not my voice, the only voice that's um responding to people. So for a while now, what I've been doing is, um, I've been meeting more regularly with Justice. And as I get emails, I'm running it by him and talking it out together. Um, and I'll say like, hey, this is, what, what do you think? That's what I'm thinking, what do you think the steps would be? Because we are a system of thirty-eight thousand students and all those other community members. Um, and I'm just one voice, I am the Chair, but I am one voice amongst us. And so I feel my, my form of leading or working is also to have other voice, uh, leadership being us working together. Um, and I've learned that like, when Sunita was my leader, I would run it by her. And even we're getting more emails now than I did when uh Sunita was my Vice Chair. So um, I'm collaborative in that way with Justice more so than I had been last year, I think. Not for, not for any of the reason that I'm like, okay, this is really, I, I need a thought partner. And so I'm using Justice as my thought partner.
Thank you. All right, you all have the last scenario and then we'll take a little quick break. Just pick one, I know you had three, you're overachievers.
God, I'm new here, just waiting to know.
Gonna have to get her one of these to take with her. So Shelley, just letting you know, we're gonna get her. Yeah, a bronze one. We can have one of our, uh, what is it, CTE programs. Please design a bronze microphone to take with.
Also the comedy.
Don't tell, don't tell her though.
All scenarios should be addressed from the point of view, okay, whatever. You receive multiple complaint emails from parents, students and coaches about the lack of fields available to meet the needs for all teams to practice and compete. This comes on the heels of the city selling off, selling off fields that the district used to use to, to a private developer. Oh, what is the best response strategy action slash for the Board?
Okay, I'm gonna sound like a broken record. Send, we said that we would send the thank you email so that they understood that we received their email because we wanna make sure that they know that they were heard. And then, thank you so much for your email. We're gonna forward, we are forwarding this to our Chair, Co-Chair and Superintendent. Um, and then if we have an, like a desire to speak more about it, we could bring up the topic during our one-on-one with Gustavo. And then we could also bring up the topic during our Board Member comment time during a business meeting. And then if it's a topic that we wanna learn more about or we wanna talk more about as a Board, we could ask the Chair or Vice Chair to add it to the agenda for the next time. Um, and I think it goes back to that vending machine response versus the lottery machine or the slot machine. Because we all have different connections in our community. So if we are seen as, with this person, we're a slot machine. You got the, you got the jackpot. With this person, we're a vending machine. Like, it's, the house wins, the house loses, like it's, but if we're consistent collectively, it helps funnel all of the energy into efficient processes for solving problems rather than exhausting energy in ways that don't, doesn't actually solve problems. So it's a really boring response and it's why we got to go through three scenarios because it was the same response for all three scenarios. It became really just a very simple. And it, it sounds cold, like it, it, our, our thank you email for the email doesn't need to be cold by any means. We can repeat what our interpret, like what we heard in the email. And this sounds like a challenging situat- like we can affirm concern and be consistent.
Yes. If you're all in lockstep with one another, it makes it easier for you to be efficient collectively instead of the lottery situation. Because then, guess what, when, it's like um, we, I call them like uh, in another, in my other hat that I wear, um, where we have a lot of our customers trying to circumvent the process. And then, and one of our teammates are like, it's like raptors at the gate. They're just like seeing where, where there's gonna be, you know, an area. And the thing is, you wanna funnel everything so that it actually gets solved. And you actually are successful getting them the information that they need instead of up, like holding this, this, creating this new process. And now it's all the energy, all the time, it gets just extended even longer than getting them to that resolution. Go ahead.
Um, I appreciate you saying that, um, because, I mean, the, the main part is people reach out to us when they are having an issue. Like there's something that's impacting them, their student or the community. Um, and as a Board, we wanna be responsive. And I think that's the space that all of us are coming from. Like we wanna be responsive to our community. That's, they got us here, right? Um, and with that said, if we work in collaboration and get them to the right person quickly, then that can be addressed. And if that's not addressed in a way that they feel it's addressed correctly, you know, to their, to how they would like it to be addressed for whatever reason, we have a complaint process and then it gets looked into. And then that's so, there's particular processes that are in place to really address the issues that are coming up for people. Um, and um, that's our intent. Like it's not, not listening to people, it's our intent is to really solve the issue when we can.
Yeah, and you all really care. That's why you sacrifice your time and energy to do this job that pays you a million bucks, right?
Yeah.
Like, you care, that's why you're here in the first place.
I was just gonna say, I think those dollars were cut today. Um, my, my comment is about, um, lately, there's been emails that I've been receiving and possibly other school board members are receiving that are rumors that are in the community about possible, you know, school closures and uh, all of that in, in terms of community. So it's really a school district communication that needs to happen and it's happening. Um, but I, I just wanna ensure that, cause I mean, it, the, the, I mean, it's not that often I get those uh, emails, but at least once or twice a month, I'm getting those questions. And I just wanna make sure that the communication is out there, cause I'm not on Parent Square or anything like that. So I don't really know how parents are getting the messaging about, no, we're not actually doing any plans of moving schools or closing schools or anything like that. Um, I just wanna, it's more of the line of communication and how it goes out. I know that a lot of times, school board members receive this, the uh, Parent Square information prior to it being passed out. But it's just kind of all part of the communication.
Thank you. And in that process, you would forward like, thanks for your concern and. Okay, so we're gonna get into another area, which is that um, operations piece that we can get distracted in. But before that, I know you guys have been sitting for a while, so I wanna give you a little break to bio break. Um, maybe come back here at um, fifty-five, three fifty-five? Forward into. And, um, I think Melissa mentioned it, you know, on the other scenario, where she was saying, and then if we wanted more information, we can request this item as a future agenda topic, which of course, is where we get into sometimes operations, and more in the weeds than sometimes we need to be. And, um, this can become overwhelming, if you have seven people that get into the weeds. And you are trying to manage seven different people, going after different, all sorts of different things, and wanting to be informed, all well-intentioned and everything, but it can become unwieldy and, um, hard to manage. It can take away from the work of running the district for the superintendent, who's trying to manage seven different people. There can also be, um, times where unfortunately, we, as board members, attempt to direct staff or superintendent to do things that is not in our purview or responsibility. Um, and then we also have a pathway of like adding agenda topics, right? Where we have a process in place for how we request agenda topics, and that's another thing that we can um, kind of dive into a little bit and see if there's gaps or opportunities. So how we're gonna do that is, I'm gonna give you an example of language that I've, that I gathered from other boards locally, of how they, what they do, or what they have in place to help school board members stay at the high level that you're supposed to be functioning, and not get into the operations. And see if there's any language in there that you're like, wow, this actually looks really good, or this is something that we might consider incorporating into us. My goal is to get all your feedback, and then there's potentially opportunity to revise your working agreements in August with your new, uh, people that are coming on. Um, and also, like I mentioned, you are all gonna be the seasoned board members. If you have new people, you're gonna, you're creating that foundation, and you're gonna help kind of corral your newbies into like, hey, this is how we do things in Beaverton, this is how we, you know, manage ourselves. And, um, it kind of reminds me of what we tell our kids to be self-managers, you know? Uh, that's what we're trying to do for ourselves. So, I'm gonna have you pair up with somebody that you haven't worked with yet, so you can stretch your legs and move, and when I see you, I'm gonna come and drop off your particular, language that I grabbed, and then you're gonna discuss with your other partner to see if there's, um, things under there, opportunities, and then we'll come back and you'll all share. And they're all different, okay? Don't be afraid to switch it up.
And you were.
So it's just looking at um language or things on there that helps you and your boards self-contained so you're not getting into operations? Like is there language or things that could be put into your working agreement that helps you stay at the level of a board member? And kind of curb, cuz like I mentioned, when you get new people, you're gonna be revising and they're gonna be recommitting to your working agreements. So this is an opportunity to build, like I'm gonna collect feedback as you guys are all talking about where there's potential opportunities to have a little bit uh more, either be more concrete, a little bit more process. When you, especially when you're, if you have a lot of new people, or if you have some new people and they might, you know, get inundated for agenda topics requests or information requests. It's like how do you, how do you, yeah, help manage that and manage each other? So I'm gonna give you just um a couple more minutes to collect your thoughts and your feedback. And then you'll share out what you liked about the different pieces that you got. Okay, I'm just gonna give you one minute to wrap up your comments and then we'll share. Okay, we're gonna come back. And I'm gonna stay seated here so I can take notes um from the feedback that you all provide. I'm gonna collect information. Okay, everyone. We all wrap up and come back. Sorry, sorry, it's a good discussion, right? There's really great stuff in here. And and the thing is, like, the reason why these are always changing is because there's always different dynamics on the board as well. And so you have to also come up with agreements that every year you're revising and everybody can abide by them and commit by them and then help you be an efficient board. And every time, there might be a different makeup, there might be different personalities, there might be different things going on. And so we have to revise these. And as you can see, the, all the different examples that you got, they're all from real boards. I just kind of omitted the names, but they're all from real boards. And if, if this was easy, there would be like one template and we would all use it. But everybody does it a different way and they're all trying to figure out how to do it the best way possible. So I'm gonna have um team over here, let's go this side first, um with Susan, Justice and Sunita. Um talk about, I mean, we'll go around, but if you wanna talk a little bit about what elements or concepts you found in the agreements that you, that you saw? That you think would be good additions to look at, at how to incorporate them into your own uh agreements? And I'm gonna take notes from here.
Okay, uh we might've got a little, little spinny, but I think, at least, this is my distillation of some of the things we said and y'all can. Um we, we looked actually at the very first thing around, like, the, the district and the mission strategic vision and planning values. And then priorities, and we were, we had a discussion just about like, like which one of those things was the most like, kinda making sure we were progressing on, like on towards the vision and the goals. And, and the thing I think we agreed on is like understanding, and I don't know if there's a recommendation of something to change, but understand that priorities and like the current priorities represent like the time-bound thing we're doing that would be a part of our shared, like checking in where we're at. Um and, and, and we brought up also like the, which one we're gonna get update on the dashboard, which has some of the, some of the district metrics around stuff that we're, that are priorities, right? So just understanding that. I don't know, again, that was more of a like, a revelation than I think of a change, but just a, okay. Um there's that uh down in the communication area, both of us, two of us, something highlighted the like ensuring all board members are included in communication that impacts the school board, which got us talking about two things, like one, like what does that mean in terms, like is that notice of what the communication is? Like if something's going out to the public, then it packs the board? Um or if it's something like related to a complaint process or something else, like how do we um think about ways either, if appropriate, involving more of the board in like the end process of that complaint? We had a great um suggestion from one of our board members, I don't know, I don't know, we could talk about there. But, uh but it was a good thought around maybe tying like a third, like this leadership reviews that by our policy and then, but like with maybe another board member, a third member based on zone and the complaints location, sitting in in that decision, whether to see it to the board or not. But, but generally, we connected those two things, that um some sort of triaging of when we're talking about like communication or an issue that impacts the whole board, how do we um, how do we keep people informed without maybe going like where we're making a meeting or doing something else that, which is not the intent, the intent is the awareness of like this might impact the board. So um and then I guess as individual board members being aware of that. So those were the two biggest things that I distilled from our dialogue, I think, um.
The only thing that I would add to that complaint process uh was that having the person who is in that zone, first of all, it gives more eyes into the complaint process to make sure that we are not missing anything. And um the other thing would be that person in that zone intention should be improvement for future. And usually, when we go into schools, uh if we know what the problems can be, we can have our thinking caps on and ask relevant questions. If we do visit that school and try to see if there were any improvements made. And that's the reason why I feel that in the complaint process, it would be nice to have one more person looking into that. So that that person, though the school is in that zone, is also aware of what's going on, so.
Susan, did you have anything? Okay. All right, let's go over to the other group.
I was peeking at Sunita's because we had different ones, okay. Um and so we read through and noticed a lot of similarities with what we have, which was affirming, right? That good um governance has some commonalities. And so as I was going through, I was trying to identify, oh, that statement's there to address a challenge that the board was trying to address. So um a common challenge is board sharing, the board sharing information with the superintendent. And then the other side of that same coin kind of is superintendent sharing information with the board. And I feel like our current agreements were pretty good, like they're pretty detailed. We've talked about that a lot, so I didn't, we didn't pull something necessarily that would help expand what we already have. The next challenge is staff time responding to board requests. And I kinda had to laugh because as lifelong learners and all folks who are really excited about public education, we could geek out about this stuff forever, right? And we have so many questions, we wanna, we're asking out of curiosity. And at the same time, we don't want to prevent any staff member, Gustavo included, from doing their job in the system of education. Um and so how do we balance that? How do we articulate um, recognize and celebrate our curiosities? And then also make sure that the staff get to do their job and aren't, aren't being um held back? Because out of a power dynamic, they can't really say no, they don't want to say no. And it's like, how do we give permission to say no of, okay, I appreciate your curiosities and I actually have to go do my real job. okay, I appreciate your curiosities, and I actually have to go do my real job? Um, can we resume this two weeks from now, when there's more time, or whatever? Like, how do we build that in so that, um, we celebrate our curiosities and then also make sure staff have what they need to be able to do their job? And then we really liked, there was one, or I thought it was a good description, and this might be a good point of conversation, is community engagement, and example D, there was, um, two number fives, and one described community engagement from the superintendent's perspective, and then the other number five explained community engagement from the school board perspective. And I thought that was a nice distinction of the role that we have. And then as Tammy and I were talking, really, there's, and Erica, you brought this up earlier, that we're in campaign season. And so how do we have agreements that help us engage with the community as a board, which looks one way, and then to win elections or to engage in a campaign often asks us as individual board members to act a little differently, to be able to campaign one-on, just for our own voice to be on the board. And I don't know if there should be language in our board agreements, because that's a campaign, or I don't know what that looks like, but I do feel like that could be a tension.
No, that, that was, yeah, and so, I loved working with the teacher who was able to helpfully summarize things and see commonalities, it was really great. Yeah, and so, I mean, that was one thing that I was struggling with, the five and the five, um, number five and number five. And, you know, being, you know, we're all here because we ran a campaign and we connected with voters who are now our constituents. And so trying to find that balance of, you know, do we continue that relationship with constituents in a, in a one-on-one? Or, you know, as an individual, you know, in the, in the four years between our campaigns? And, you know, should there be board rules about what that looks like? Versus, you know, you, you only engage with the community in that way during a campaign? So that was the one thing that we, we had a little discussion about, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Susan.
I mean, actually, I'm more compelled by the questions you had than the, the questions we had, so, and I find that really fascinating, too. So both of those are interesting to me, but I have to say that, you know, when I was thinking about when you're running for school board, it's a whole different, at least, this is my perspective, okay? So, you know, take it as that. From when I first ran to my third campaign, there's such a learning curve from your first time to your third time being on a school board. And I would say there's a lot I didn't know about what it meant to be on a school board when I ran the first time. And by the time, my second time, it was more an educational perspective of what it is to be on a school board and what that means. So hopefully, the people I'm meeting with understand that we're up here, not down in the weeds. And I would say that continued on, that, you know, specifically for the third time I ran, too. It's like, you know, you, you learn, you live and you learn, and when we're meeting people that are running for school board, it's an opportunity for us to, you know, because a lot of people want endorsements, and, and that gets a little dicey, I know, because, you know, who, you know, who do you, who do we endorse as candidates' school board? And then who can, you know, because I, I mean, I've certainly have felt this, too. Who is it appropriate for me to endorse as a school board member from other political offices? And, you know, that, my opinion on that has changed over the years as well. But my point being that this is an opportunity, when we talk to candidates about what it's like to be on the school board, to say it's not, you know, it's not what you think it is, because most people don't know unless they've been involved, you know, in education in one way or another. So if we could help guide people without, you know, spoiling the fun. I mean, and it's hard work, because public education is getting pounded more now than ever before. So, I mean, that's, so you had a very compelling.
It kinda reminds me, I don't know if you guys remember, I think it was like, Pampers used to have these commercials that said, like, first-time parent and then second-time parent, and it's like, the things that you made, the, the mistakes are lessons that you're learning the first time around versus the second time, like, eh, they'll be all right, you know? Like, now you kinda get a little bit more of the hang of things, and the things that you were like, oh, I, you know, I have to do extra, and now you're a little bit like, oh, okay. And what, the purpose of this exercise is to really figure out, like, now that you know more and have a better context, as you think about new people coming in, how do we help them avoid getting into that operations piece? How do we build things in their, in our processes as a board that helps keep the conversation elevated? Or even into, like, how, how many, how are requests filtered? And how do we do that as a board so that we, to Melissa's point, have that balance of not burdening staff or superintendent with all of these requests? Like, imagine if none of you were here, right? Like, the, the things that you come up with are things that are gonna live beyond you. That's the, that's like the really nice things that I think about, like, what you, what your service as a board is that you leave a legacy of creating processes, foundational things. And if you're a really good board member, elected official, you create great policy. And those are the things that live on longer beyond your term on the board, right? And that's what you kinda wanna get to, but, sorry, Susan, you had a comment.
About the fact that I don't think anybody else is, on this board, has been with anybody but Gus. And I've had, you had, you had Don, okay.
I couldn't remember, that's a sad thing.
So here you go, I mean, but I've been, I had Jeff Rose, Don Grodding, and Gus. So three different superintendents and three different ways of doing the work. Not, but again, it was, what's the school board's, you know, we're up here, it didn't matter, I mean, for the most part. It still was, you know, our job was to look at policy and not get into the weeds, but there was different approaches by each superintendent. So that has also been an experience and a learning experience, and I forgot, I didn't forget about Don, I just forgot, I've, you know, again, the memory's going.
Yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
Susan, you're bringing up the, the idea of the dynamic of board and superintendent. And I, and I know we have things like evaluation, and, and I, it makes me think of, when, if I think of my favorite bosses, I wanna, I, like, the characteristics that helped me thrive by those supervisors, I want to be that for Gustavo and the staff, right? Like, I see my role as trying to make sure that the system has what it needs to function really well. And how do we do that as a governance and then also management, too? And I think that those are two different categories of governance versus management. And there's an ethos around management that everybody approaches differently, right? Like, we've all had different managers who have been great in different ways. So it's not like we all need to have the same management style by any means, but I do think that there's a little bit of a distinction between governance and management.
Yeah, you, your only single employee is one, and he has seven different bosses. So the reason why we're talking about working agreements is so that he can have some clarity as a whole versus each individual person doing it their own way, that, that can take so much more time. And it's hard, I mean, and I think another point, we talked about, like, the power dynamics of how it's really difficult for, like, staff to tell you, hey, you're going out of your lane, or even Gustavo to push back and say, like, and we look at that diagram that we were talking about, the storming, norming, and performing, there's opportunity for constructive criticism that happens. And if, like, and if that's something that you can nurture in as your board, right? When how, uh, how are you creating a space or openness for that to be landing on you? Okay, and be like, oh, okay, I got you, I'm going in the weeds, tell me if I'm, you know, doing that, or like, if we're already gonna be talking about this later, that's okay, we're gonna, we'll, we'll schedule it, and but how are you creating that environment and that culture that, that can happen, right? And so, um, one method is looking at what, the language that we use and how we put, I think Melissa and Tammy, you mentioned, like, wow, some of the language in here sounds like something happened, and they had to put it in there, right? And it's interesting, right, that, that's kind of how we go around solving the people problem, because there's this really unique power structure that is happening at this level, right? Go ahead, Susan.
That brings me to a question about using the agreements to solve a, a situation like that, Erica? Is, is that what the, the board agreements are meant to do, or is that what happens?
It could be a combination of both, is, and sometimes it's in preparation, like, to ensure we don't go down this path. Let's build in some parameters to keep things working at the level that they should be working. Sometimes there were gaps, and until a situation happens, we had no idea how to navigate it until it happened. And then we have to go back and be like, oh, you know, that process didn't work well for this situation, so we need to figure out what, a process to put in place, or, or, um, language in there as well. But it could be a result of both. So here's what I'm, I'm about to wrap up here. We ha, I got some feedback from you on this working agreements, but you all have another retreat later on that you're gonna be coming back. There were some points mentioned earlier about looking at a feedback loop, um, some language that seems like, hey, this could be, work really good for our, our board to, to add. So, um, before I wrap up, I wanted to talk about, one of the last pieces on here was about the interpersonal relationships. And this is an area that is really not codified anywhere, right? This is just about, like, learning to get along and peopling one-on-one, if you will, and how you build trust with one another so that you can have these difficult conversations sometimes, or around topics, or. It's so important, because when you call me up, Susan, and say, like, hey, Erica, I think you were like, you know, how I came across when you said this comment, it creates a dynamic where I can hear that critical feedback, be like, oh, I, I didn't even think about that, or I wasn't aware of this other thing, right? And you're, you're helping me be a better board member as well. And that doesn't happen unless there's trust in our relationships. And one of the ways that I'm thinking about what I was brainstorming with Justice and Karen that they brought up is like, you know, we don't have a lot of times where we are connecting to one another as people, we mainly is like, come into the board work and then we leave. So what are some ideas or, like, kinda like, quick brainstorming of, like, suggestions that we could possibly come up that helps us build a better connection to one another so that we can be better at our work when we come to the board?
Again, it's coming from past experiences, but in the past, we have had social engagements, which I know can be complicated, but e, even if it's, um, in the past, it was with the cabinet and the board. I don't know if that's appropriate anymore, but I would say that it's good to have, like, a barbecue or something like that someplace where it's not anything to do with school board, it's about, you know, just connecting on that level.
Oh, I mean, I wrote down for myself, um, uh, just even some level of one-on-one checking in with my other colleagues is, you know, can we have a coffee? Not talk about school board, just like, life in general, or something, not what we're doing here, but so that there's some level of, uh, keeping that affinity and understanding of each other as people, you know, I mean, growing, and yeah, it's one of the ones I can't, which, I know, yeah, so, I'll stop.
I don't know how we can do it, but maybe have a book club or something together, we can meet, or just, you know, have a social or meet together and just without school board work.
We've done that in the past, actually, had a book to read together.
No, 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 we, we've done it before in one of my districts, where we would have, uh, like, a winter social at, uh, one of the board members' houses and be invited, and we would have protocols where we wouldn't talk business, and we actually played board games, it was actually a lot of fun. That, it was actually fun.
There's a lot of opportunity, that's what I wanted to, like, highlight, right? And that's the, back to the performing, where you're actually having fun doing the work, and gets, it, it feels like you're not working, like, you're actually having fun with the people that you're serving with, right? So I, I, there was a idea on here just to put on, but I captured all your thoughts on here regarding to how to build connections, and I'll debrief with board leadership. Again, this is just, the, the, the topics that we covered today is how to basically avoid those pitfalls of where we fall into problem-solving and operations, and also how to figure out strategies to build more interpersonal relationships with one another. Because if we don't do that, like, if we don't have those things in place, it really can impact by diminishing the effectiveness of your board. It also impacts the ability that you actually get the work done that you're here to do, and the perception that you have out in the community. And the distractions, like I mentioned, can cost the district time and money. So I will have a debrief after with board leadership and figure out how to incorporate the feedback that you all gave us today, and talk about, um, our possible next steps, which would be update, maybe working agreements, schedule maybe some of those board activities that you all mentioned, or ideas on how to do that, and what would make sense. So, thank you again for, um, your time, and I hope this was helpful to you all, and this, this helps improve your board efficiency for your new board, however it looks like in the future.
And next we'll have Sting, Steve Langford, do our, on the strategic plan metrics dashboard.
Good afternoon. My name's Steve Langford, Chief Information Officer. A few months ago, I shared with you a prototype of our strategic plan dashboard, and I am happy to say that as of this afternoon, uh, we have launched version one. It is available, uh, on the public website, so I'm gonna take just a few minutes to, to provide a short update to you. It's under the About Us page, you'll see Strategic Plan and Strategic Plan Measures. It'll take a second to load that first time. So there, there it is, boy, that was a little nerve-wracking, too, waiting, because we hadn't loaded it on this, but, but that's great, because this is what our community is now able to see. So you'll see there's some text at the top, it's very much, uh, the dashboard prototype that you saw a few months ago. Uh, there are the metrics at the bottom, tabs at the bottom, that will take you to the different visualizations. And at the top, there are buttons that will provide filters of those, um, uh, visualizations. Uh, for example, gender, tag, special education, ELL, race ethnicity. So we have launched, uh, version one of the dashboard. You will see at the top here, there is English and Spanish built in to the application. Oh, sure, sure, if you go to, um, you're gonna make me do that again, and hope it works. So we're gonna go to the Beaverton School District website, we're gonna go to the menu, uh, up at the top left, and choose about, click the About Us button, because it's a submenu off of the strategic plan, uh, you'll need to click that About Us button. And then you'll see Strategic Plan on the right with a down triangle, and then there's the Strategic Plan Measures. and then there's the Strategic Plan Measures. Actually, you're gonna wanna cl- did you see it? Oh, good, oh, good, good, good. Oh, that's okay, um, all right. So, uh, as I mentioned, it's English and Spanish are built into the application right now, and when you click on Spanish, it will translate everything into Spanish. Uh, we have other languages is, uh, available down below, they're in PDFs of all of the data. Um, our current work is to move the additional translations into the application itself so that they become interactive. So that is work the team will continue to do. Um, we will also, uh, we launched without the staff retention data, that tab that you saw. Uh, we are continuing to work on that tab, we're gonna be bringing that tab back online very, very soon. Uh, and then the next piece of work is the state will be releasing the graduation rates, and as we get that data, uh, we will be updating this, um, dashboard with the latest graduation data from the state. So with that, um, just wanted to provide that update. One thing I did want to thank the board, when we met a few months ago, you had asked, you, one suggestion from the board was that, uh, we look at the, um, human resources information, uh, they did not have explanatory text, and so we added that, uh, based on the board input. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Susan?
I just wanna compliment you and your staff for getting this up, and I look forward to using it as we, you know, delve into, um, where we are as a school district for our students, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you, it was a great collaboration between IT staff, staff from teaching and learning, and staff from HR, working on this together to make sure that, that we were clear with the data, um, and we had the data that represented, um, the, uh, what, what was it most important? Those 10 poll metrics for the strategic plan, so thank you, I'll pass that along to them.
Yeah, and I wouldn't be surprised as things go along that, oh, there might be more questions or changes that go along with it.
Yeah, uh, th- this is going to be an application that, uh, continuously evolves. So, uh, as we, uh, data will be updated as it's made available, so it will be changing. This is not static information, and so, um, as we continue to work on it, we're gonna be, um, adding data and features. And, and as I mentioned, our most important work immediately will be to make sure we get the additional languages moved into the application, uh, so that, um, members uh, in our community can, um, experience the interactive piece of the dashboard.
Uh, I'm going to extend the compliment, um, and be sign everything that's been going on in the last three, four weeks. Your team has been very busy, dealing with very big things, right? That are impactful for our staff and families, and the fact that your team was able to launch this today, um, is really, really impressive, so thank you. Um, and geeking out about data, I find very fascinating. I'm curious about, um, how decisions we make as, in policy and budget can help us elevate some of these bars, right? That's the intent. And I, it reminds me of the principal who shared with us, um, during the literacy presentation from Raleigh Hills, um, Principal Di Martino, talking about the strategic way in which she's offering instructional practices based on student data. And so, because she's trying to move those stubborn numbers and changing the way that she does business in order to make all of our students successful. So, I, I hope we see the data as op- as opportunities for changing our practice, um, and see it as opportunities throughout our district to be able to increase our, the inclusive way in which we serve all of our students. So, thank you.
We have a great team, and I, I do appreciate you acknowledging this in the context of everything else that's going on, and I will pass that along to them.
Any other comments or thoughts?
It's so good that we don't have any questions, we wanna look at it.
So, so the great thing about a dashboard like this is, it's, as I mentioned, it's gonna continuously evolve and grow, and, and so there's a reason for people to come back, but, but we will also be looking at ways to improve it. So we will be continuously soliciting feedback and making sure that what, what we're sharing is representative of that data that's, that's most valuable and useful to people.
I don't know if you can do this or not, but this is the data, but could we, and maybe Superintendent can add on this one, is, can we give, like, what is causing the data to go up or down if there is a big shift? Like, okay, we did, we introduced this, and we feel that this is what made it better, or I don't know, is that measurable?
Because in fact, I think it's difficult, because it's a, such a big system, but I think we can say is, like, what initiative made a, made a move? I think that's one of the things that we're trying to work on as a system in terms of return on investments, in terms of if we, if we, if we add this, what should we expect to see happen, and how long it takes? It usually takes five years for any initiative in public education to stick and make a difference. That's why it takes a long time, it, it's a, it's public education, it just takes about five years. That's research behind what I just said to it, and, but it's a, it's...
Maybe, maybe one thing that we could add, this is just thinking out loud, is that our English, early literacy program, right? We are doing MTSS, we introduce something this year, and here's the changes. Like, maybe we can give the year that it was introduced, and we can see like, has it made a move?
Yeah, I, I think we certainly can take that back to our teaching and learning colleagues, our IT colleagues, and, and think about how we could, um, connect those thoughts, ways to do that.
This is great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Perfect example of, uh, just a, a system implementation. I think with Superintendent Guerrero was in the seat, I think his first year, maybe the beginning of second year, he implemented, um, a system of, of MTSS structure where there was data, and data teams and expectations, how to use data, and, and, um, and also, um, interventions and extensions for students. And I think they're reaping rewards now in Portland Public off the, off the, of what he did, and the team did, not him, but the board, the team did, for, for those years he was there. So he's no longer there, but the system's reaping rewards based on the implementation of that system.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a, a question yet, but I'm glad that it's up and it's live, and it's working when I searched for it, which is, I think, means, um, other folks will be able to get our eyes, and hopefully we'll get, uh, I imagine we'll get some emails, or feedback, or questions, that might then, um, inform either changes, or, or at least would be generate good discussion on what we're doing, so I'd like to see it. I don't know if you have anything currently, just back with us, but...
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do people need a stretch break, or do you wanna keep? Okay, so next up, we have Shelley Reggiani for Equity and Inclusion work. Welcome, Shelley.
I, I've been stretching, thank you, I appreciate it. I was going to lead you through one of our activities we do with our Littlest Learners, if you needed to have some blood flow and re-energize another time. Thank you so much, Chair Perez, Board of Directors, Dr. Valderras, for your invitation to share with you this evening. I am really excited to share the work of advancing the experience of our students, staff, and families in the Beaverton School District through the work of the Office of Equity and Inclusion. I'm familiarizing myself with the clicker, pardon me, am I pointing forward? Well, that would be helpful. Let's try that again, hello, it works, fantastic. That's actually the question that my kids ask me at home, mom, did you turn it on? All right, wow, uh, it looks like I'm a little bit off-center there. Hmm, I apologize for that, I'm not su- well, we're just gonna roll with it, friends. I'm gonna take us, uh, to our promise this evening and center us on the work that we do here in the Beaverton School District. This is something that is prominently placed on our website, and what we believe in, in our aim to create an environment which our students feel a sense of belonging to their school and communities, where they are accepted, supported, and encouraged to be their full, authentic selves. Uh, our belief in our students' capacity to learn and grow and thrive, and we want our students to believe in themselves and in their full potential. For all of our students, their high academic standards, and all of the support to achieve their own personal choices, wishes, dreams for now and in the future. For us, this is the promise in the Beaverton School District, whether we are in front of the classroom as teachers, or we're the persons who support those who are in front of the classrooms. This is our promise, and each one of us who are a member of Team Beaverton is a part of that promise. And this is our personal goal, that we aim to transform education and eradicate the predictability of student success based on race, ethnicity, color, religion, national origin, immigration status, language, family economics, age, culture, geographic location, mobility, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, disability, or initial proficiencies. In the Office of Equity and Inclusion, we have this as our driving goal. This is directly connected to our Beaverton Equity Policy that you passed as a board, something that is a North Star for the work that we do in Beaverton, and that leads the Office of Equity and Inclusion. And then that takes us to our core belief. As we're advancing the experiences of our students, staff, and families, we center back on this core belief, and in this particular definition, you're going to see a couple terms, and there's a distinguishing factor between two terms that are very often used synonymously with one another, but there are some key differences. When we talk about educational equity, it's about fairness, assuring that individuals, our students, have access to a barrier-free environment and school setting and community of learners, where each student has the opportunity to fully benefit. And then there's the word equality. Equality in education is about sameness, providing everyone the same thing. However, with education, we know that equality is only attainable when everyone starts from the same place, has the same needs, has the same interests, the same advantages, the same disadvantages, the same histories, et cetera. We must first ensure equity before we can actualize equality. We must first ensure fairness before we can actualize sameness in terms of experiences, in terms of outcomes for each one of our kids. So as we're talking about the advancing of our experiences of our constituents, I'd like to think about it in three different containers. First, uh, our classrooms, thinking of this as three Cs of the work. Our classrooms, our colleagues, and our communities. When we're talking about our classrooms, it is every single student, pre-K through 21 in the Beaverton School District. Each one with a name, an interest, a talent, and a need, every single one. Our colleagues, each and every member of Team BSD, our classroom teachers, our administrators, our classified staff, our TOSSAs, every single member. And in our community, our parents, our guardians, our community partners, these are each of the key people who play a vital role in the support system of each and every one of our students. So during this presentation this evening, I'm gonna focus on each of the three C areas, kind of in the big picture way, and then I'll take us down to a specific example of some of the work that is happening within that area. So we'll start first with the first C, our classrooms. I love this quote from George Washington Carver. "Education is the key that unlocks the golden door to freedom." Wow, it matters, the work that our teachers and our staff do every single day. This philosophy, unlocking the golden door to freedom in education, it underpins our why, it's about transforming our system and eradicating that predictability that we talked about on one of the earlier slides. And as we frequently will hear Dr. Cordy refer to, especially for those who are furthest from educational and social justice. That's critical in the work that we do, and it starts in every single one of our classrooms across this district. So to that end, and this first C, we're going to be focusing on who is in front of the classrooms. This particular slide is a high-level overview of some of the key areas that the Office of Equity and Inclusion works directly and to support each and every one of our classrooms, and that means the people who are in front of our classrooms, our paraprofessionals, our educators, our teachers, as our primary, uh, focus, our teachers first, and then every concentric ring thereafter. I'll start out by talking about engaging equity professional development. Last year, the department started, uh, what you might have heard as modules, and their real central focus was creating a common system of understanding, shared vocabulary, experience across each of our schools about, what do we mean about engaging equity inside of the Beaverton School District? This year, each one of our instructional staff, each one of our TOSSAs, our administrators, has gone through year two, by the end of this school year, they will have gone through two years worth of these equity sessions. It's approximately six modules, about three hours in length, that really root them in the practices and the belief and the pedagogy of instructional excellence and equity in education. Culturally relevant instructional practices, some of the key components that we discussed that really bolster what happens in the classroom and creates the culture inside of our schools and our school communities. Bias incident reporting, which is connected to policy ACB, something that the state of Oregon said must be instituted by January 1 of 2024. So we have completed a full year, we are in the midst of our first full school year of having a bias incident reporting system. Formal complaints involving civil rights and culturally responsive and supportive responses to those instances. You'll see, uh, some of my work that includes an intersection with our Title IX Coordinator and Office of Civil Rights Person, Leanne Obanion. So think of she and I sometimes like a Venn diagram, and there's a distinct area right in the middle where she and I partner and work together to productively solve problems when there are pinch points that happen inside of our schools. And certainly not least, our McKinney-Bento homeless services, that by year's end, I am estimating we will be north of serving 1,000 students in the district. Last year, it was definitely north of 1,000 students. Imagine if each and every one of those students were in one school. That would be a very large school. That's the capacity of our school system across all of our schools, supported by our amazing McKinney-Bento team, to support our students who are experiencing homelessness in our district. All right, so that's big picture, I'm gonna take us in a little bit deeper and talk about the Engaging Equity series that I had just mentioned a little bit before. So, you see on this particular slide, a series of numbers. I'm gonna focus on numbers one through six first. You'll see underneath or right above each number, there's the year. Numbers one, two, and three represent what happened last year. When we look at the scope of learning, the arc of learning across these six sessions of engaging equity PD inside of Beaverton School District, they focus on key areas. Underneath each of those bold-faced words gives you a little bit more concrete, tangible nuggets of what is learned. You'll see that throughout, we're giving staff common vocabulary, a way to talk about how we are discussing the things that we do and say, the way that we value students, the lenses that we use. For example, understanding bias, where that comes from. That difference between equality and equity, as I explained earlier. How to interrupt bias and check bias. We often think about bias as that silent companion that lives with us throughout our lives, and it bites us every now and again when we realize, oh my goodness, I have a bias right there. The funny thing about bias is that it often runs in direct contrast with our conscious beliefs. So when we can recognize and raise to the consciousness the biases that are inside of us as individuals, the biases that we have in terms of a system, we are better prepared to make sure that we are fully matching our conscious beliefs. And that's for us as a Beaverton system. We have some very expressed conscious values in Beaverton, they're in our strategic plan. So it's our opportunity to check against those in the way that we're serving our students, our staff, and our community. You'll see that there is a large component on safety and belonging and inclusion, and that that is one of our pillars, one of our three pillars inside of the district. So some very specific, understanding the physiological body response when a student doesn't feel a sense of belonging. And what happens when a person feels exclusion? The impact on learning, the impact on their identity, and most importantly, the things that we can do as educators to correct that. Things that we structurally set up, and the things that we respond to when they happen. You'll see under the last three, and four, five, and six, that represents this school year. Equity-centered decision-making and... Equity-centered decision-making and inclusive classrooms and schools. And you recognize the term MTSS because we've heard so much about it from the rest of our teaching and learning team as it pertains to reading. It also pertains to belonging. It belongs, excuse me, belonging behavior, the social-emotional well-being, which also includes discipline of our students. But really focusing on the belonging and the well-being as the protective factors that keep us from needing to engage in school discipline. So really centering our staff across the district in these conversations. And what does that mean for us to have that connection with each one of our students? In an equity-centered manner, in the way that we have structured and affirming conversations with each one of our students. And then one of the other pieces, using a lens, an equity-centered lens, to look at student data. Hmm, we can look at data all day long. We can make sense of it, and it's really important. What you just saw from Steve earlier definitely exemplifies one of the things that we discuss inside of this equity session. That when we look at the all-data-only, we are closing our eyes or putting on blinders to sometimes hidden pockets of excellence that we need to replicate. Or unfortunately, hidden pockets of things that aren't going so well for certain groups of students that we have to address. So it's a commitment and a mindset to look at data in a way that says, I see you. I'm seeing your experience. And I'm addressing this so that we can get to that place of fairness in our service, so that we can have sameness and justice in our outcomes for our students. Number seven represents the professional development to scale. So you heard over those last two years, we've been primarily focusing on the serving, serving our teachers in the classroom, all of our certified staff, our administrators, and we have so many other employee groups that we need to bring along. And we've been doing that in chunks. Had the opportunity to work with Public Safety and their entire team, and they invited in several Washington County and Beaverton Police Officers as well to attend a three-and-a-half-hour engaging equity through the lens of Beaverton training with Tatiana and myself. That was exciting to be able to root them in this conversation that is happening in every single one of our schools. So very, very excited about that. And we're using that as a model that we can replicate with our food service team, with our transportation department. I know that several of our departments, such as technology, have already done several of these pieces. But as a system, it's going to be very important for us that we leverage the talent that we have within the many people who are trained to deliver this content to scale so that each member of Team Beaverton School District has the opportunity to be rooted in this conversation. This is a very busy screen, so I'm going to zoom in on the side that just has the wheel. These are the culturally relevant instructional practices that I mentioned in one of the earlier slides. I didn't create this.
Is this Sho?
What's that?
Was that Sho?
Yes.
Okay.
Way to go, Dr. Perez.
Thank you, Sho.
Yes, thank you, Sho. A number of years ago, Sho Shigiyoko, who was in this role that I am in now, along with several other very caring and dedicated educators, cultivated these practices through research to say that these are the key, high-leverage instructional practices that we will be focusing on in Beaverton that create culture, that create community, that lead to equitable outcomes for each one of our students. So here it is in a little bit better zoom so we can each see 10 of these 10 practices up close. Every single one of our educators this year has gone through a revitalization, refamiliarization, and for those who are new, an introduction to what these 10 culturally relevant instructional practices are in the classroom. They're definitely, each one, connected to the entire Engaging Equity PD series. Every single one of them, starting with knowing oneself, knowing our students, building strong relationships, normalizing rigor in our classroom and the belief that every student can and will achieve. Checking our classrooms really talks about checking to make sure that we have centered culture of belonging and welcome in our spaces. And then you see the other 10. I'm also happy to share with you the printed materials later. So if you would like some of these for your own reference or as you walk through our schools to be able to see, ah, I see this connection. I can see where staff are making intentional moves in each one of these areas. So this is particularly exciting for us. These, as I mentioned, have been taught across all schools, so we're addressing the needs of each one of our learners. Our next C is our colleagues. One quality of leaders and high achievers in every area is the commitment to ongoing personal and professional development. I often would talk with teacher leaders and those becoming administrators when I've taught them in their licensure coursework to say, you know, we all go to the dentist. My dentist has been there for 20 years. I would like to think my dentist has gone through professional development for each of those 20 years and has gotten better. Instead of being a dentist who has spent 20 years, being a first-year dentist, 20 years in a row. It matters in every single profession. It certainly matters in education as things have changed over time. This quote talks about growth. Growth of mind, growth of the spirit, connection back to the values of the Beaverton School District. And it's not just about the individual, it is growth as a system. Everything that we're talking about tonight is about the system. You can have pockets of excellence, but without a system, we can't get to systems of excellence. And that's what this is about for us. So some of those high-leverage things or high-visibility things that working on with our colleagues, restorative practices, this is a really important one. This is a component that is directly called out in our strategic plan. A number of years ago, staff members, incredibly dedicated teachers, teacher leaders, classified staff and administrators started work on this. We had a little interruption called the pandemic in the middle. And now we are ready for a full revitalization and recommitment to this work because it really makes a difference. Supporting our students through a culture of care. This is a continuum. And later on in the school year, when we have the opportunity as a teaching and learning team to come to you and share, what is the culture of care in the district, including student discipline? We'll be able to dive in more. Where my work comes in on the culture of care is starting at the foundation. We think of exclusionary discipline as the very far end of the scale. But if we aren't doing work at the very beginning, those are our protective factors that keep us from needing to engage in discipline. That's where the culture of care happens. Supporting our school administrators and our teachers of this is absolutely critical. Supporting administrators anytime that they have a need, a personal question, or in large group professional learning. Most recently, Dr. Valderras has asked if I could come and support every single one of our administrators, and this includes our classified administrators, with helping our staff and our students unpack national and regional events. We did that in November. There was disequilibrium. How do we respond? What do we do? Making it not political, but talking about the caretaking and how do we show respect to each other, our students and our families, across difference. And giving students particular frames, social-emotional support on how to process whatever it is that they're going through. Whether their person won or their person didn't is not the point. Caretaking of our students was. That was really important. When we're supporting our students during regional and national events, that can happen at any time. I think about a number of years ago when several of our colleagues in the Salem area or down in the southern region of Oregon were battling natural disasters. When we are prepared, when we have mental models of how to do things with our staff and our students and our communities, we are better able to serve them. So we use this time back in November as our entree into saying, this is how we're going to caretake when there are things that pop up locally, regionally, or nationally. Right now, there's another national conversation that's happening amongst a handful of others. But one of them is about the way that Beaverton School District specifically supports our immigrant and refugee students and families. We had an opportunity, once again, to train every single administrator, our classified administrators, and our licensed administrators on our supports. That's widely available on our website. It's out there for the public to see. It is fully aligned with Beaverton's policies that were existing. And they are curated in a way that helps show a lens of how we support this particular community that is feeling, could be feeling very vulnerable at this time. Another way that I support administrators, it is advising on any topic, need, or issue regarding serving LGBTQ+ students and community members and staff. Because we are a holistic community. We mentioned right back at the beginning, it's part of our goals and our values. Every single one of those identities that make up a human, we have those all throughout our system. And many more identities as well, but those ones represent protected classes and particular classes that we're talking about, including those who are the furthest from educational and social justice as a student. And that matters. So we offer that counsel and support to be able to help guide our principals and be a thought partner as they serve and do what is right for their students and their staff and their communities. I also have the opportunity to work on several teaching and learning projects alongside of my colleagues with, for example, the Superintendent Student Council. We have several of our students who, from that council, who sit here on our school board on our weeknight events, excuse me. The cellphone engagement policy, the culture of care and well-being and discipline processes. Adjusting our synergy function so that we can have better and more accurate data about our students in the culture of care. Wow, I see a little bit of a through line here in terms of systems and data. All of that matters. Stamp language assessment. I hope that you were able to see in Dr. Valderras's recent communication, the work that our amazing MLD partners are doing in elevating home language of families and offering high school credit for our students who are speakers of other languages in partnership to English. It's amazing. We have more than 100 languages spoken in this district. And to celebrate our community that way is awesome. But this is one of the partnerships that we have within the teaching and learning. And then we'll also be partnering and engaging on the student survey later on this spring. I also have the honor of supporting our TOSSAs along with our Executive Baovang. And we're providing professional learning to them in the areas of engaging equity, so they have the opportunity to go through those sessions as well, as well as how to lead the adult learner. Because as folks who are TOSSAs, teachers on special assignments, that is oftentimes their role, and that too is another type of art. The art of teaching the adult. And so coming alongside and providing that professional learning. Other ways that we support our colleagues include staff affinity spaces such as AAPI, our Asian and Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander communities, our Latinx community, our staff who experience disability, our staff of color, and staff who identify in the LGBTQ+ community. So those are spaces where staff can congregate together and share a common activity, conversation in a place where there is comfort and collegiality. I'm going to zoom in a little bit more on professional development. So this particular professional development that you see in these pictures represents a couple sessions that took place earlier in December and January, and that will be taking place again in February. Connecting through conversation, this goes back to that culture of care that I was talking about. This is a workshop for all educators. So in these pictures, you see classified paraprofessionals. You see folks who are from our public safety team. You see classified staff who are from any area. We have folks from our business office also attending. It was pretty amazing to see them right alongside of our teachers, our TOSSAs, and our administrators. This workshop was for every person and is still open to them. Part of this is about connecting through conversations and thinking about, when the heat is on, how do you turn down the heat? That's a critical skill in leadership inside of our schools. And when we can build the capacity for every staff member to demonstrate that care and that skill, to demonstrate calm and reflect calm, especially when our students are experiencing dysregulation, that's a bit of a superpower. And those are the opportunities that help us prevent future discipline instances because it's rooted in relationship and having strong conversations versus combative conversation. I'd actually say combative conversation doesn't exist, a combative exchange. We're working on strong conversation. And that's empowerment to each of our staff. Again, two more that will be coming in February. So if you're interested in attending, I'd be happy to host you. Our last C, I should say that several folks walking away said, I'm taking this, putting the training in my hip pocket. I will use it next Monday at school and I will use it this Saturday with my own children and my family. All right, we have application across the board. And our last C, our community. We are all interconnected and helping each other makes the entire community stronger. Every single one of us, that connective tissue. Our community and parent involvement in education is vital. And it boosts our student achievement when there is cohesion of supports across our system. When our students know that their community is with them, when their families are with them, and that our staff is with them, that's what matters. It leads to better outcomes for our students. It improves behavior, it improves attendance, and there is a mutual accountability and support amongst those constituent groups. We're a community together. We foster that between the home and the school. And our communication builds deep trust. That's important. We also promote cultural awareness and inclusivity by including the perspectives of the diverse corners of our entire district. That matters. Some of the high-visibility things that we're working on with this C, community, key areas of growth were established in my early conversation with Dr. Valderras when I joined the Beaverton School District. Engage the community, Shelley. Engage the community, absolutely. So we had an existing relationship with a Beaverton Black Persons or People Union. It used to be called Beaverton Black Parent Union. Shift in name this year as they became a 503C. Am I saying that correctly? I'm super excited about this relationship. This is a group of dedicated individuals who are leading the charge in connecting the school district and our community who identifies as Black African-American. We have reinvigorated our relationship with our Latinx community. This is amazing to have in this space here, 50 to 75, depending on the evening, Latinx community members representing almost every single school. And doing leadership training, deep parent involvement, involving bidirectional communication with this group of folks in their native language. So speakers of English would be happy to provide a headset if you would like to listen along, because it's done for this community. Additionally, this year, we've established a Muslim community group. I have the honor of sitting alongside one of our amazing principals who is helping co-facilitate this group. Grassroots, connecting with parents who are interested, community members who are interested, and meeting on a quarterly basis so that we can share ideas, talk about and address pinch points that they or their children are experiencing, and forward-think and plan together on different events that are coming up. That too exists now for the first time with our Jewish community. And I'm excited about that with our parents and our community leaders. Again, to talk about pinch points and address those pinch points and to be forward-thinking about ways that we can include, excuse me, improve the experience for every single one of our students. Additionally, establishing community partnerships. Beaverton has an amazing relationship with so many community partners. And Shelley's department with CCI leads so much of that. Additionally, we're working with local community-based organizations who do things like additional parent engagement and additional parenting education. For example, we have this new rule in Oregon that we are going to be asking students to do personal finance. We have the opportunity with one of our community-based partners to do personal finance classes for parents right alongside what we're going to be presenting to kids. How to access and navigate the healthcare system. How to access and navigate and understand the financial institutions. Why our kids shouldn't apply for every single credit card, for example, that comes in the mail. All of those things. That's not necessarily something that everybody would want to attend, but there is a large percentage of parents who'd say, yeah, please sign me up for that. I'd say in addition to that, something that I'm really excited about is in our parenting education, offering English language development to a variety of speakers of languages other than English to our parent community. That matters because that's that connection of parent-home-to-school. When our parents can better support their students, the students are better supported and can do better in school. It's relational and important. So I'm very excited about those pieces. And then I'll zero in a little bit on this one, culturally-specific food options. I know, and this time, that looks really good. Meeting with our Muslim parents earlier this fall, we prioritized a few activities that we really wanted to accomplish together. that we really wanted to accomplish together. One of our first meetings, a family said, "Wouldn't it be really exciting if some of our kids saw halal food on the menu?" Yeah, yeah, it would. So what do we do about that? Well, we engaged Charity Rawls, who is our amazing food service administrator, invited her to one of our meetings and said, "Charity, we have this idea. Can we talk about logistics? Can we talk about, can we make this happen? What would it look like? I don't understand the logistics of food service. I am just amazed by the work that Charity does." So Charity walked us through the process, the research, the cultivation of relationship with halal providers, et cetera, how to work inside the budget, how to meet the nutritional needs. It's a complex piece. She also does an amazing job of getting student feedback, and I love that student voice right there at the center. So as we discussed this, we decided, okay, let's reach out to some principals. We connected with ISB here in Beaverton, and they are a school that has a larger percentage of students who are Muslim, and they also represent 612, so we have a broader range of student ages. Coincidentally, the last week of January is Cultural Celebration Week at ISB. What a perfect time to sample halal food and get input from our students on the experience. So please stop by ISB at the end of January if you're interested in taking a taste. That's going to be, plus you'll get to see all the great things that ISB is doing to celebrate culture. It's kind of an exciting time as it corresponds this week with the Lunar New Year as well. So that's pretty exciting that we'll be able to do that. And that takes us back to our three Cs, our classrooms, our colleagues, and our communities, and the work that Tatiana and I are doing in the Office of Equity Inclusion. None of it's in isolation. Two people alone cannot lift that work. It is done in partnership with amazing leaders in teaching and learning and in our operations department, with our TOSSAs, with our principals, with our paraprofessionals. Each team member in Team BSD is a part of this network that really makes a difference for kids. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Susan?
First of all, I have to say thank you, and I love your enthusiasm. I can feel the energy, and I so appreciate it. So thank you for that. I know two people doing this job, you're right, it takes all of us to be using the equity lens and including everybody. Okay, so Shelley, as I'm listening to this presentation, which I so appreciate, I didn't hear much about the disability world. And I don't, I mean, we a lot of times close our eyes to people with disabilities, and I just want to make sure that they're included, they need to be included, especially those kids that are, you know, have developmental disabilities, and a lot of times they're not seen. So I just wanted to make sure that...
Absolutely, and I really appreciate you raising that.
Melissa had a comment.
I'm going to add to the comment, and it was one of my comments was, we found out from our new administrator, Lori Crum, that she's reinvigorating the parent advisory group for special education. So I was like, oh, we need to add that to your slide, because that's a celebration of, so we have the different parent groups and include them and welcome them into that space of parent engagement, too.
Thank you. I love that. And I also didn't read all of my notes all the way through. We also have our Equity Advisory Council that represents multiple facets, including having a community partner who has a child with disability on that group. I want to talk about that. I appreciate that you raised that and understanding that as we look at every identity of our learners, disability is definitely in there. We are fortunate to have Lori Crum. We are fortunate to have the three amazing administrators who work alongside her and this team of professionals. They actually sit right outside my door, so it's super conveniently located for me. We get to interact on a regular basis. We are so fortunate to have an entire team that gets to lift that, where tonight you saw what Tatiana and I are lifting. There definitely are those bridges to those departments. So they're just like there are to the other members in teaching and learning. Our students experiencing disability are critical, and Lori's lifting that, I'm lifting that. This morning, public service was lifting that, providing training to our public safety team around students experiencing autism. So you're going to see that there's a network of leaders across the district. It's our system, it's part of the value that we lift up all identities.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, I mean, if we're looking from the equity lens, that disability is part of that.
Yes, 100%.
I also, you know, I appreciate Gus's memo that was very heavy about the population that is feeling at risk, you know, particular right now, and then, of course, the LGBTQ community. And I just want to raise that, I know this is maybe not the right place to do this, that I am really concerned about the safety of some of our students in the district, and I know we can do all we can, teachers are being educated and all that, but I just wanted to say that if, if our voices can be lifted even more and what we can do to support our students and our faculty who do not feel safe, I just wanted to put that out there.
Sunita, and then Tammy?
Thank you so much. Can we get your slides?
Absolutely. And then I also want to share with you the infographic and then the text so you could see it in like a normal 12-point font.
On your slide for parent engagement, you had listed certain groups. Is that just an example, or is that it?
That's the work that I've done so far this year. Last year, we had the Beaverton Black Parent Union.
Uh huh.
And so this year, we're expanding, so starting the ground running in August till now. And so that is where we are now, and I'd say dot, 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 more to come. There are other departments who are connecting. Thank you so much for noting what Lori Crum is doing, but these are the ones that I'm directly connecting with or co-leading.
So if a group wants to be included or find out what, they contact you?
Yes.
Okay.
I would love that.
And I'm sure you know about the Student Voices Project, so that, that's by OS Color Caucus, so they are doing something, and there's a deadline. So since you know so many students, maybe you could spread the word on that. I think Dr. Baldairis already has that. There is a deadline on that, so it would be really nice to...
Thank you.
And, I mean, this is just my, maybe I didn't read it right. There was a slide that you had before the core beliefs, and I, this is from my understanding. If you can go to that slide, I can ask you the question.
Don't get carsick, hold on. Close your eyes. This one?
No, 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 it was before core belief.
Okay, so this is the one, just before core beliefs.
So it says, "Our initial proficiencies. We aim to transform education to eradicate the predictability of a student's success based on race." What does initial proficiency means here?
Think about a number of years ago, when Oregon had an assessment called kindergarten readiness.
Okay.
I am so grateful that ODE has changed the approach to that assessment because it placed the readiness for school on the shoulders of a five-year-old. Kiddos coming into our schools have a variety of initial proficiencies in speech, in physical mobility, in developmental, mental ability, emotional readiness, reading, numeracy, all sorts of things, how to share, all of that. There's quite a range, and every single one of them is welcomed with open arms, regardless of, or I'd rather say embracing and inclusive of, their initial proficiencies. How a student enters us, their skills, the readiness of the community to help support the family for the child to be ready for school should not be a determining factor 12, 13 years later as they're graduating. So that initial proficiency is their starting line. That goes back to that belief about fairness. Equality and sameness says, "We all start from the same place at the same time." Great, on your marks, get set, go. No barriers, y'all just have an open lane. Initial proficiencies and difference says that, wow, we have kiddos who are coming to us with different starting points. Some are further down the track, using that analogy, than others, and so embracing all of them right where they're at.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, because as long as they are challenged and they are growing, you know, everybody should be, no matter where they are.
Yes.
They should be growing. Thank you.
Tammy, and then Justice?
Thank you. Really comprehensive. Looking forward to going back through your slides and digesting some more, so I will probably have some follow-up questions for you another time.
Don't worry.
I've made some lists. I do want to ask tonight, again, echoing what Susan was saying about our deep concerns for some, some communities, are we leveraging that parent engagement with the particular groups that we are most concerned about, our, our Latinx community, our Muslim community? And again, echoing Susan, there isn't, or there is some growing disability engagement.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I, and again, I don't, are we, it's a dot, dot, dot. I get that. The LGBTQ plus community is another one that we don't, we can't leverage because we, it sounds like haven't started that parent engagement group yet, and, you know, can, can that be started? I like, you know, that, that community I'm worried about as well. And so I guess the question is, are we leveraging the existing connections that we have with those communities in this time to figure out what their needs are, bringing resources in, and, and that sort of thing? And can we, you know, jump in and get an LGBTQ, like calling all concerned families? Let's, let's, let's have, like have a session, you know, in two weeks or whatever, you know, we could do on short notice, because my hunch is some of those families are terrified.
And our approach has been more relational. With any single group that feels vulnerability, having a personal connection through those closed community networks and closed communication networks matters. People feel more vulnerable when it's open to the public's ire, for whatever reason, and we want to respect that. So are we nurturing those closed network communication channels? Absolutely. We have beautiful tools like Parent Square so that we can communicate with parents who say, "I want to be a part of this group, please." That matters. So definitely Lori leading on our communities with children who have disability, absolutely. On our Equity Advisory Council, LGBTQ plus identities are represented by one of the members, at least, one of the members who are part of that. So it's not absent of the conversation in our district advisory work. I'd also have to say that it is not a group that says, "As parents," I have not had that experience, because we don't identify those types of things on our student registration, et cetera. Those are more relational pieces. When a school counselor or a principal, principal has a relationship with a parent and they express the need of their student, that's how those relationships are formed. We do have small groups, but nothing that is very publicized in terms of this is a parent affinity space here. Does that mean we wouldn't? No, not at all. That's something that we can definitely explore as a support for parents of students in the LGBTQ plus community.
Okay, so I guess maybe I'm misunderstanding this parent engagement. Dr. Baldairis, when we first rolled on the board, I think that your intention had been to replicate what happens in Hillsborough with these parent affinity groups. Is this what Shelley's talking about? Sort of your relationship with this community, or is this something different and you still have your own work that you want to do in these affinity groups?
She's doing the district work.
Okay, so she, okay.
So I think the goal is to continue to expand out our affinity spaces to make sure that we have relationships with our community, but there's already building groups. So how do we expand on those building groups? I know we have a variety of groups here, and Shelley has expanded greatly since he arrived in July and will continue to do so.
Great.
So it's just, it's just, but it's, to your point, is we can never do enough. I think it's just connecting with the community that's already present and what's missing.
Fair. And I guess some of my question is, are we leveraging that work that you have done for this moment in time, is all I'm wondering about, is that you have done this work, can we use that?
Absolutely.
To help these families in this really stressful time?
Absolutely, and that looks different for each vulnerable population, and it looks different when families aren't feeling vulnerable as well. But the opportunity to leverage relationship to make the school experience better for all students and, in particular, students who also represent what that parent affinity group is, is about, absolutely. So are we learning from our Muslim parents about their needs for their students? Yes. Are we bringing that information back and advising our instructional department and our operations department? Yes. Same with our Jewish parent group, same with our Latinx parent group, and with the BBPU. Now, our BBPU relationship has been longer established. There's trust there, excuse me. We've done different grant activities together, and we have a deeper relationship, and that's exciting. I'm excited to have that level of relationship with the other groups that I mentioned. I know that takes time. I'm new to them. They may be new to Beaverton, and if a person is feeling vulnerable for any reason, trust is, it's a double down on how to earn that. So for me, it's tread at the speed of trust. We have to move at the speed of trust as we build these relationships within our community. But yes, is it an advisory back to me of how we can improve the experience for them and for their children? 100%.
Thank you. So my comment first is, one, thank you for putting together this presentation. I think it's really important, given, I mean, all the time, but it's heightened at this moment, the ability for folks to fill in the blanks around what, you know, what our equity work means, right? Was it, how does it show up? How is it connected to the practice and operations of the district? How, how are these things important to education? And by, you know, one, something that we've had in terms of the 10 points, right, that that didn't just arrive, that's been in operation in our district, but folks may not know that, right? And some people may conveniently try not to know that. And I said that, just anyone listening. And I think it's really important that we have to, again, even when we pass our resolution, to surface the things that our education professionals have built up to try to do the best practice to serve our kids and our families. And I really appreciate getting some of that in a consolidated form, right? So then it may make it easier to, one, have future conversations, but also in terms of accountability to create the space where we say, well, this is where, this is the language we're talking about. So I really enjoyed, and I'm going to look forward to sitting with the presentation, and then, and I also appreciate you expressing the, the trust piece and moving at the speed of trust, because I think that is a, for an institutional body like ours, you can be enticed to do big actions that look really good, and people, everybody's here, running around, look at all the stuff that's happening. But the effectiveness and the meaningfulness and the direct connection to the immediate need may not be there at all times. So I think it gives me comfort that that understanding is, is there and is hopefully, you know, permeating through the way we're operating as a district, so thank you.
Melissa, is there anything you want to? You don't have to, but I just...
Well, I was, as you were presenting, I just, and this goes back to data, and how the lens by which you're encouraging all of us to see the work, we're seeing that reflected in some of our school visits with our school leaders as they look at that MTSS, because you, you know, it was, it actually, I had forgotten that in that path graphic, that MTSS was part of it, but when we went to go see some of our schools, they're showing how down to the student, the MTSS data is impacting the instruction of students because it's surprising and it's been interesting how many staff and, school leaders and teachers have said, "Yeah, I was surprised that their score was either higher or lower than what they anticipated." And we're curious about what that means. Was it a different day? Was it a, you know, what is the depth of that? And it's encouraging all of us to look down to the student level of how do we help that one student thrive to their greatest success, right? So just again, the site visits helping us see what you all share with us in this space, and seeing that in action is really beautiful. And then I just wanted to bring up that parent engagement with the special education families. They've been asking for it, and I, I think it's really exciting that we're bringing it back. So thank you.
It really is.
I just want to thank you again, like everybody else, for the presentation, and as I think about what's happening in the world, what's happening today, or what has happened so far today, I just, I feel, I experience comfort in knowing that we have conscious values as a district, in the Beaverton Schools District, and the... And the, the, the pieces of how we are consciously and intentionally creating spaces for safety and belonging and inclusion for our families. We're not perfect and we're setting up these systems. And I'm very, uh, proud, um, when I think about, you know, some of the, the document, the thing, the, the, some of the information on our website that was put up when you, when you were speaking about it, and I've seen it on our website too, it's based on policies that the boards before us and some that our board have, um, put into place. And that gives strength to what we can do as a district. And that goes back to those conscious values that passports and our current board are putting forth around that safety, belonging, and inclusion. And, um, on another slide, you were, you had, we're all interconnected and helping each other make the entire community stronger. Um, and I think, um, that is important. Our educators are working hard, are, to create those spaces in their classrooms. Our classified staff is working hard to create those spaces in the spaces that they're in. Um, our administrators are working hard to create those spaces in those buildings and at the district level, working together to, towards those conscious and based on those conscious values. Um, and I appreciate your attention to the detail of how it looks different for each vulnerable relationship that we're building with our community and how we get the information out, um, intentionally, um, looks different. For some, it would be a big flyer and we're posting it everywhere. And for others, it might be based on those relationships at that school or in, in that group. Um, and I appreciate how we are continuing to grow. And I, I'm holding also the space, um, for our students and staff um, around some of the heavy, um, some acknowledging, um, that there may be fear, um, acknowledging that we as a board, I could feel like we could, I could speak for our board, are, um, intentionally here to support all of our students. Um, and that we celebrate those, the, the, the superpowers that everybody brings, whether it's around their race, their ethnicity, their color, religion, the national origin, immigration status, language, family economics, age, culture, geographic location, mobility, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, disability, different abilities, or that, um, initial proficiencies that, what they come to us with at any point that they enter our system.
Right.
Our goal is to be here for them. And we will continue to work through our policies, um, work through our funding, um, continue to be aware when we're made aware of, of issues or systems changes that we need to make, um, concentrating on those, um, to make the most stable and supportive spaces for our students and our staff, um, during this time and moving forward. And I believe that boards before us have done that as well in setting up the policies and the procedures and the different pieces. And we continue to strive to improve. So I just wanted to name that for our community and also for our board, um, and for our staff that may listen to this at some point. Um, and, um, yeah. So thank you for your work. I appreciate, I appreciate the work. And Seeing Show Circle, um, that I was trained on when I was part of the second Equity Cohort here in Beaverton, like it goes back and, um, it's, it's growing fruit. And now we have, it was years to be able to get those in intentional, um, professional development for all staff. And it's in collaboration with the state, um, with those modules that were made during, for the Every Student Belongs. Are they perfect? No, are they, do people need accelerated? And some people need more basic? Yes. And it started the conversation. And it started us having those deep conversations in each building. And it's allowed each administrator to develop, to learn that and then implement. And in implementing, it becomes more real for everybody. Um, and it's hard work for many. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
Um, with that, I think, um, I'll hand it to Dr. Baldur to see if there's any closing words.
I just appreciate the staff and the, and the board engagement. I know these are, are long afternoons after working, uh, we'll see, just are on all day and all units. Just appreciate all your, your time and energy. And this is just to spotlight some of the staff work that's been done. There's much more work being done on top of which has been shared today, especially on our, actually, every department, literally from, uh, I think what you saw today is just a glimpse of the talent that we have in Beaverton. I truly think this is the best, um, staff I've ever worked with. And, uh, I call it the, the very top in the food chain in Oregon, with Mike Schofield, who's not here, he's in another meeting. But with Heather, Shelley Regiani, Shelley Billy Shaw, just everybody that's here, including my support staff, Sarah, is we have talented people that want to come to Beaverton. And it's our goal just to continue to do the fine work that we're doing. But just fortunate to have just quality staff. I mean, it's literally, Steve Langford's the best CTO in the state. Mike Schofield, I say that, he really is. And, but I could say that about every person in most of the departments. So just fortunate to be able to have that quality staff and just continue to work. And it takes time to change a system with 50-plus schools, 40,000 kids, 38,000 kids and 300,000 people in our, in our community. But it's, it's the right work. We need to continue to stay focused and do it in collaboration with all our partners, all our faculty. Make sure we stay on because this is, there is a secret sauce to school improvement and we're implementing that secret sauce. It really is data, but we need time to process the data at the building level. We need interventions that are consistent K through 12. And they are differentiated because Bonnie Slope's very different from Barnes. So that's the, that's the secret sauce of the leadership and talent at each building. So just thank you for all the work and commitment. So thank you.
Thank you, Board. With that, we bring to a close, um, the January 28th Board Meeting at 5:57. It's not a board meeting, the...